We're close, Kelly.
Video's on. About thirty seconds or, oh, fifteen?
There's a song about that. Your radio.
What was that one now?
He moved, he just moved the mic. Okay. We're in.
Okay.
All right, I've got four thirty. Call the meeting to order, please. For public inf- public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reizig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Shall I all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I don't.
Kelly. Board, do you have anything to add or any changes?
Yeah, there's one thing I'd like to add to the agenda, and I don't want to wait until board reports to do it just because the folks came early, but if we could, we have Dan Quixos and Kyle King here and who else is here?
Carlos.
Carlos, Bear Cruz. Anybody else? Dory. This is the group that has been working on the street art at the laundromat on East Overland and also most recently behind the Gearing Bakery here in the city of Gearing. But here in a little bit, I don't know where we want to slot them in on the agenda, but they would like to work on a piece of property that's owned by the county.
Okay.
And I just, I just, if we could slot that in somewhere on the agenda.
Okay, we would need to declare that it's an emergency item would be the only problem with that.
Okay.
And is there a, is there a time sensitive anything with it, Charlie? Or is it something that we could put on and discuss possibly without taking action?
We don't need any action tonight, just a discussion would be.
If, if, if you don't mind waiting till our discussion, we could certainly do that in or- in order to get you on the agenda where we have to take some kind of action, it needs to be declared emergency by the board, so I'm just, just following rules. I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't make the rules, but that's, we do need to follow those. And we'd be more than happy to discuss it with you if that's, if that's all right with you. And we'll try to get to that as quickly as we can, if that's all right. If not, pay attention to the rest of the board meeting, maybe you'll, kick, kick in, kick in your ideas, how's that, okay? All right, thank you, guys, I appreciate that. Thanks, Charlie. All right, anything else? Okay, if not, I would, we don't have our little clickers here.
I am so sorry. I have them right here, though.
That's, are you, were you just going to vote for us then right down there while you're, while you're there? That's okay. It won't charge you much. Double up the rolls for protests, you'll be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, record your votes, please. Again?
Okay to close?
Okay to close. Thank you.
You have five yeses?
Okay, I want to remind everybody that the board does have the right to enter to a closed session anytime that we feel it's necessary. We do have a executive session at the end of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting. We'll move into the consent agenda. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any discussion? If not, record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Need a motion to move into Board of Equalization, please.
I make a motion we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Or call a roll? I'm sorry. Record your votes. Okay. We've got five yeses? Good to go.
I have, I have a close to me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And you do have five yeses?
Thank you. All right. Angie, I want to thank you for my yellow card today in the mail. Appreciate that. We'll be discussing, we'll be discussing that later. Okay, discuss and consider the over/under evaluation report. Angie, you're up.
It was brought to my attention that we had three erroneous values that were on file after March nineteenth, but per seventy-seven fifteen oh four, bringing them to the board after June first, we're allowed to make adjustments without having them go through the formal protest process. So I have three parcels that I would recommend a new valuation for. Do you want me to read them in or do you just have your report?
Why don't you go ahead and read them in, please?
Parcel zero one zero two three five zero three five is currently assessed at ninety-five million eight hundred and twelve thousand four ninety. I recommend forty-nine thousand seven thirty. Zero one zero zero two seven nine two zero is currently at ninety-five million five hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty. I recommend thirty-three thousand sixty-five dollars. And zero one zero zero two 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 eight is at ten million nine twenty-five eight seventy-two, and I recommend forty thousand five zero two. It had to do with the calculation in the land valuations.
Have you got copies of your calculations on that?
I'm sorry?
You got any copies of your calculations on that?
So.
Basically, when the lot size was entered, they were valued as acres when they're really square foot, so it.
And they, they were never assessed on this amount?
No, no, they were.
Yeah. And this just corrects a clerical error?
Basically, yes.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
I make motion we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Not, record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Yes.
And you have five yeses?
Okay, we have a motion to.
Thank you.
Close Board of Equalization, please.
Make a motion to close Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Record any discussion. Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Moving on to general.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Moving on to general gen items. First item is discuss and consider the sale and adopt a resolution to sell the building located at sixteen hundred tenth Street to the Bozara, is that how you pronounce it, Phil?
I think Basra.
Basra, close enough. Ba- Basra Projects LLC. Phil Kelly, attorney, is going to address that for us.
So, we had a, historically, we went through the process of trying to get bids for the building and it didn't get any, so the statute allows the board, if you don't get any bids, to go out and negotiate a purchase price. We received one offer to purchase the building for five hundred thousand dollars, and that contract was, was signed and we're ready to close tomorrow. I have a resolution prepared reflecting all of the legal description, all the legal steps that the county has gone through that's been approved by the title company, and it calls for sale of the property to the buyer for five hundred thousand dollars, approval by the county board, and authorization to the chairman to sign all the documents and the deeds and whatever. So all that's been approved by the title company and by the buyer. So I'd recommend that you adopt the resolution for sale of the building. And then I have three or four documents for the, for you to sign, Mr. Meyer. Right away, so.
Okay.
You have a resolution?
We have the resolution prepared, ready to go. Okay? I would entertain a motion.
One other thing I need to tell you, the money's been wired to the title company and they've, they're evaluating me with a receipt, they have the cash.
That's what I was, they're guaranteed funds and you haven't.
I don't have them, the title company has them. I've got a copy of the receipt that the wire was sent on Friday and a copy of the receipt the wire was received by the title company today.
Okay. I would move approval of the resolution for the sale of the real estate, the bank across the street and as prepared by Mr. Kelly.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Is, is there any due diligence that we need to follow to make sure that the wire transfer was where the, where the funds came from?
Generally, there are certified funds that have to come in, and I'm assuming those are certified, but that should be clarified, really, we should know that. Those should be certified.
Are certified into an escrow account at the, at the title company.
So I have the. Do you want to take a look?
Sure. I, I believe the money's there, I, I guess my concern is where the money came from. Is there, there needs.
This is a hot going wire. Sent to Black Valley Bank, and I don't know, shows that it was sent by Basra Projects from First Turn Bank in Chi-Law.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, record your votes, please.
Am I okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item is discuss and consider the sale and adopt a resolution, sell the property located on the east end, holy smokes, the, the east end of Beltline Highway to the city of Scotts Bluff. Okay, if you give me a minute to sign.
Here.
We'll get Mr. Kelly moving. I don't need to be there, do I? No. Feel free to talk amongst yourselves.
Mr. Kelly, did you say I had things to sign to? I mean. Hold him, tie him up just a little bit.
Okay, the next one will be the city of Scotts Bluff, then.
Yes. Got a resolution there to sell the land out east of town to the city of Scotts Bluff for twenty thousand dollars, we're going to close on Wednesday. The resolution and all the documents have been approved by the title company and the city attorney, and so we're ready to go to adopt that resolution if that's your pleasure.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
I make motion we approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Okay, give me a minute here. I think there's quite as many on this one, is there, yes there is.
There was a pretty lengthy discussion on that, was there, they're still doing maintain on the roads and all the stuff going through that?
Yes.
I haven't seen the final.
Very good. Okay, sorry for the delay, folks. Okay, moving on. Receive update regarding NACO, Elaine, welcome, nice to see you.
Nice to be here.
Did you just drive in today or have you been here?
Um, let's see, I.
It's been a whirlwind.
I, I was in Sydney this morning, so I spent the evening in Sydney last night, so. Plus, I had been in Ogallala on Friday, which many of you were able to attend for our groundbreaking, and I'll comment a little bit about that before, or before I.
This is Elaine Menzel, she's the legal counsel for NACO.
Yes.
Any of you that don't know who she is here?
You assisted me and I appreciate that, thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Our goal is, well, and I should say, special thanks to Kelly, she appeared with me in terms of trying to schedule me to be here to visit you. Nebraska weather didn't always cooperate, so there had been at least three or four times I tried to get out here, and so we had that shift, and this is the day I'm here, so. With that, I kind of tell you why I'm here. We are attempting to visit all ninety-three county boards this year and attend a meeting and just to let them know what we're up to, how the year is going and that type of thing, and please let me know if you have any questions as I proceed, and I did, Kelly was kind enough to hand out my business card, so if you have any questions that you didn't happen to get asked of me, please feel free to contact me after I leave or anytime through the year. I'll just, I'm perhaps a little bit different than some of your other attendees today, I'm not here asking anything, but rather to invite you to attend some of our events and sessions, and, and we're fortunate enough to have Charlie on the NACO board, so these things will be repetitive for him, but perhaps he'll think of some other things that he'd like to bring up at our current events that NACO's up to as well. With that said, the county boards have a new program that, there's a certification program that they can receive thirty, or if they receive thirty hours of continuing education, then they can get a certificate within a two-year timeframe, and so with as many educational opportunities as we have, I think that's pretty attainable. So with that said, I'm going to jump forward and tell you some of the events we've got going on. I think I overheard that some of you are going to be going to Carney this week to attend the County Board of Equalization workshop, which starts on Wednesday, and then also on Wednesday, there will be the beginning of the county board's workshop, and those do not run concurrently, rather the back-to-back, so you would not, I'm sorry.
I, I, I need to interrupt you for one second. Phil, I forgot one thing, thank you for all your hard work with this, I wanted to do that while you were up here, on, on all of the real estate things that you did for us.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I forgot to do that, I wanted to, but he was very, very helpful, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have done that.
Kelly sends me a check every month and.
That's all that matters, right, but, no, I, I did want to thank you because you did work hard on that, okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Elaine, I, I see you was getting ready to leave, which was, which is good because we're on the clock when you said it here, so.
As an attorney, I understand these things. No, no, I certainly, I'm here to accommodate your schedule, so please, I, it's not a problem by any means. But some of the things, if you've not registered already for the county board workshop, there are topics related to broadband, jail standards, elections, human resources, mitigations, area threats, for purposes of the county treasure workshop, that's going to be next week in Gearing, so she won't have to travel too far, and then the clerks will then be in Carney, so hopefully Kelly's able to attend. And then the assessors will be later in August in Carney, and then to preview, the district meeting for the fall will be for purposes of the Panhandle in late September, the twenty-ninth, and it will be in Bridgeport at the Prairie Winds Community Center. And then with respect to the National Association, this is the point when I'm going to take the time to say thank you to you for being the National Association of County, of County, National Association of Counties, there we go. Big N and little n, so it gets confusing the time, but anyway, as a member of them, hopefully you've seen many of the benefits. For those that are not members, we point out some of the things that the National Association has been able to bring with respect to ARPA dollars and with loosening the dollar restrictions, such as now it's available for government services rather than strictly just health-related items, and so hopefully your county is able to benefit from those types of things. And so with that, their association is going to be holding an annual conference in Austin July twenty-first through the twenty-fourth of this year, and then jumping back to Nebraska NACO, we're going to be holding our legislative conference Thursday, October twelfth in West Point. The reason we do that in West Point this year is because our former executive president of NACO is from Coming County, West Point, and that was Judy Munzenberger, therefore that's why it's held there. Then we will be doing our annual conference in Carney. I know many of you weren't able to attend perhaps because of the weather storm last year, but the new UNICEF center is very nice to be at, that's December thirteenth to fifteenth, and we'll hope you'll be able to attend us there. Now then, with respect to some of the happenings related to NACO, as I mentioned earlier, last Friday was our groundbreaking for the new office, and so that we're able to have more of a Western presence, and we're hoping that you will be able to attend many events that we hope to hold there and take advantage of reaching out to the staff more so that are intending to be at that location from NACO as well as MIBS, our computer division. My understanding is it's supposed to be able to hold up to a hundred and fifty to two hundred people, I believe, for purposes of offense, and then also where the ground just broke last week, my understanding is it's supposed to be twelve months to eighteen months for purposes of completion, or that's our expectation. Then, if you've not done so already, I would encourage you to sign up for the electronic newsletter, and that's available weekly, but then also during the legislative session, there's a separate legislative newsletter if you're not on that list. And any of these things that I mentioned can be obtained on the NACO website, so hopefully that's a good source for you. And probably the best words I will tell you right now are the legislature has adjourned Sinead I as of June first. So, yeah, that was, and we got by this year without any inheritance tax reduction or repeal. With that said, I don't think we're out of the woods, and we would anticipate there will be something coming next year. I don't know, like I said, I know many of you from the Panhandle were unable to attend the last year's annual conference, but my understanding is the governor indicated that was one of his initiatives that he would like to see accomplished, so hopefully we can message the importance of it, and we understand that the elimination isn't perhaps what we want to totally tire position to, but rather that at least there'll be a replacement to that, if there's not going to be that inheritance tax for counties to rely on because they rely on it for purposes of services and programs and that type of thing. And we did have a, a survey of five hundred voters and the, from an independent company that had no bias with respect to meaning coming from our organization or something like that, so it was helpful what she found, of course, no, or their company found, of course, no one wants to pay taxes, and they would like to eliminate all of them, and that's not going to be a surprise to you. But when it came down to it and they identified the types of taxes, meaning property and income and, and inheritance tax, inheritance tax is way down there, it's not.
What kind of return did you get on those five hundred?
Um, you know, let's see if I can tell you the numbers. Three in five, so sixty-one, well, I don't know that I've got a return, it was they did it through various means in terms of through phone calls, they did it through email, they did it through cellular, they did it landline, they did it different representation and that type of thing. I don't remember the specifics with that, with the exception of that sixty-one percent of those Nebraska voters from a random survey say inheritance tax is acceptable after hearing a neutral description of it.
Sixty-one percent of those that returned or responded, basically, yeah.
Yeah. So, and, and then if inheritance tax is eliminated, seventy-five percent support the state dedicating other tax revenues to maintain county services. So the good news is I think we've got a pretty good message to work with based upon conducting that survey. With respect to the legislature this year, it certainly seemed frustrating and that they accomplished nothing, however, we, the speaker indicated on the last day of session that they did actually do some things. do some things. Well, they passed a budget, which was pretty much the only thing they had to do, and the voter ID they did do. And then some things related to property tax relief and income tax relief and school financing. But then, based on the number of bills, it shows roughly only about 40 bills passed. But with that caveat, there were roughly, I don't know, 20 to 30 omnibus bills contained within many of those bills. So that ended up being 291 introduced bills ended up passing in the finality, which is common with respect to the numbers. But with that said, I want to be respectful of your time and not take any more, so. But I do thank you once again for allowing me to appear.
You don't want to talk about recipes or anything?
We have recipe books still available, if you'd like them.
Just kidding, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I couldn't help myself.
Well, we do have, we do have them available, and it goes for fundraiser for the fire that occurred in the furnace caviar last year. And hopefully we can receive more, no more this year, so fires, that is. Recipes, maybe, you know.
Now, in the Ogallala office, and I don't know who told, maybe Charlie brought it up, there was going to be legal counsel there onsite. Was that something that we'd heard?
I don't know that, possibly.
I thought there were...
I, I know there's an office for the executive director, deputy director of MIBS, deputy director of NACO, an office manager.
Okay, I may have misunderstood. I thought they said they were going to have a legal counsel onsite.
I've not heard that specifically, but that doesn't mean that I've been involved in all discussions.
Okay.
Now with that said, I know we'll support them with respect to...
Oh, sure.
And there certainly may be...
And we know you're a phone call away.
Or we may, you know, I like coming this direction too, so, so always game to take, you know, some time in the office.
Sure, I understand, very good.
But, like I said, I really do appreciate your time. I appreciate Kelly assisting me and everybody else.
Well, Elaine, we appreciate you coming out. Give us a, give us an update. I know this board appreciates NACO.
Oh, well.
We, we really do. I, it's a...
And, and we appreciate you, so the feeling is mutual.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Drive, drive careful.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Next item, discuss and consider approval of $10,000 funding for the Hague Rodeo. Brenda, just mosey on up here, ma'am.
Okay.
I can't help it, I can't help it, I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
Okay, this year's rodeo is going to take place on that Monday again, July 31st. That's because that's right in between them traveling back and forth from Cheyenne Frontier Days and then on to their next destination. We are asking $10,000, but this year we're going to use it in a little bit different manner, hopefully, and I'll explain as I go. But the Champions Challenge is a professional rough stock rodeo sanctioned by PRCA. And the event pulls in a different level, a professional level, of cowboys that we typically don't see at rodeos in Western Nebraska. And they take the top 20 cowboys as of July 1st in each of the rough stock events. So there'll be 20 saddle bronc, 20 bareback, and 20 bull riders. And they will all, those 60 cowboys will receive an invite to this event. And again, it will be held out at the Mitchell Event Center, Scotts Bluff County Fairgrounds, and the stock is going to be provided again by the Servie family. And the reason that we really like this event is because it gives us an awesome opportunity to make this a national caliber event. Not very often do we have local tourism events that, you know, pull in the Cowboy Channel. And, I mean, I know that if I could have had a dollar for every time I heard either Scotts Bluff County or Mitchell, Nebraska, you know, from those commentators last year, I could probably retire. I mean, they did an excellent job, and the coverage for this county was outstanding. They had, they sold about 3,700 tickets last year, and I think somebody kind of lost count. So they're expecting it was even a few more people than that, and they're expecting an increase this year. And some different arrangements have been made to put bleachers and other seating options over on that west side. And while Riley was at the tourism committee meeting this time asking for funds, he played us a video, and it just demonstrated the really poor sound quality. And so the advisory board has asked that we give them $10,000 to upgrade the equipment that they use for that, so that we have, you know, a better successful feed to the television, so that the people watching the Cowboy Channel...
Oh, so you're talking about the sound system that went out over the air?
Yes.
Because the sound system there was awesome.
Yeah, the sound system there was okay, but, but for those watching on TV for the Cowboy Channel, it, yeah, it just, it wasn't as good of quality as we, we would have hoped. And by no means do we want them to say, oh, you know, you don't have the equipment you need, so we can't do this event anymore, because that's the most important...
Does that stay with, where does that stay then? If we, if we give the money, does that stay with Scotts Bluff County, or does that move around with, with the rodeo?
No, the $10,000 would just be to rent the equipment.
Oh, just to rent the equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it would be just to rent the broadcasting equipment and also a big screen, another big screen television.
Okay.
So, yep, unfortunately, $10,000 doesn't buy you much. Yeah, so we, but yeah, we could at least be able to rent some, some high-profile equipment that we could get in here that would make that connection better.
Okay. For those of you that weren't there, it was, it was awesome.
It was awesome.
Charlie and I were both there, and I don't know who else, who else was there, but they, they had probably the most professional, professional staff I've ever seen, from the, from the announcer to the bullfighters, to everything, the entertainment, everything was as, as top-notch as you could find anyplace. I don't think that place has ever seen what we saw that night.
No, it was, it was...
And, and I've heard that 100 times from different people that, you know, that attended. And I'd heard numbers close to 5,000 is what they're expecting this year, possibly.
Yep, if they can work out the seating.
If they can work out the seating and get them in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And a little bit better flow over there, but they'll get it, I know they will.
Yeah, they'll, they'll figure it out.
Yep, they will.
They'll figure it out.
And then just as a reminder, this money does come from lodging tax.
Right.
It's lodging tax, so it's, it's all through the promotional county tourism fund.
Yeah, there were a lot of out-of-town plates there that night. There was a ton of out-of-town plates.
We always just take about the first 15, 20 minutes and just walk through, and there was no way we could count. People were parked where they shouldn't have been, and it was kind of a mess, but, I mean, you know, just to get a general idea, you know, there were, there were a lot of out-of-state vehicles.
It was a, it was a first-class operation. I, I, that's all I can say. I don't know, I don't know what other term you can put on it.
Yeah.
The, the, one of the best, absolute best events I think I'd ever, ever seen up there.
$10,000 is what we gave last year.
We gave $20,000 last year.
But that was part of the purse too, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was part of the prize purse. But this year we decided it would be, you know, more beneficial to the county, since, you know, since it's being televised to help them with that expense instead.
So you're anticipating our participation is this $10,000?
Yes.
We're not going to be asked for another 20 later?
Nope, 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 this is it. He turns in one application annually, and so this is, he, he did ask for $20,000, but we decided that we thought that it would be better spent this way, so.
Did we have any stats from the Cowboy Channel on viewership on, on the TV?
I, I sure didn't. He included a little bit of that in his final report last year.
Okay, I would be interested in knowing, because it broadcasted live, and then I believe it also reran a couple times.
A couple times after that.
So that would be something I'd be interested in knowing after this year's event. You know, did we increase from over last year?
I don't write that down.
And the, the national advertisers will be in this year because of last year's success. You know, if you looked around the rodeo arena, you know, all the banners on the, on the corrals were local, local companies, Platt Valley Bank and, you know, Olix and, and B&amp;C Steel, those sorts of things. This year we're expecting like Levi's and Wrangler and Justin Boots and Ariat, all the, the big national advertisers, they saw what happened last year, and that's, I believe, why they don't need the prize purse money this year, because they've got...
They were inquiring, they were inquiring the week after it happened.
Yeah.
They were making calls, wanting to get in on...
So it was a tremendous success last year.
Well, they, they did ask for prize purse money.
Oh, okay.
Originally, that's what they had asked for, but we decided, just based off of the things that you just mentioned, that we, we would be better trying to boost, you know, what we're doing on our end to, to make that more attractive to the television audience.
But I think with their national advertisers, they're going to have plenty of prize money. I don't think that's going to be an issue for them.
Yeah.
Well, I would move approval of the $10,000 of funding for the rodeo.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If not, please record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, discuss and consider approval modification of the IGA, US Marshal contract to include districts of North Dakota, South Dakota, and Colorado. Hi, Bonnie, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm fine too. The US Marshals had contacted me again in regards to the IGA. We signed it and went into effect on April 1st. They did not have North Dakota, South Dakota, and Colorado on that first IGA, and so when they have any modifications, they're going to include all four of the entities that we are currently serving.
The rate's the same as what we had agreed to earlier?
That's what I was going to ask.
$100 and $30.
We're just adding those other states.
How much was it again, Bonnie?
$100 per day.
Okay.
And $30 an hour per...
Awesome.
...asset.
Okay.
Normally...
Almost twice what we used to get. Awesome, yes. Okay? What's board's pleasure?
Why move, we approve that?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, please? Hearing none, please record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bonnie.
Can you have a copy of that?
Is that the one you want me to sign?
Is this it?
Whichever one you want me to sign.
Will you show him where to sign and then bring it to me, so I can get a copy? Thank you.
Right there, where it says sign. There you go, thank you very much. Okay, next item, discuss and consider approval of the APIS, one more time, APHIS contract. Matt Anderson, Wildlife Specialist. Good evening, Matt, how are you?
Good, how about yourself?
So far, so good.
Last year there was a total of 689 hours in Scotts Bluff County, and calls for assistance with wildlife damage involved multiple species, including coyotes, badgers, raccoons, rats, skunks, beavers, muskrats, blacktail prairie dogs, and multiple other species. Predator conflicts involve both threats and predation, cows, calves, sheep, farm-raised fish, piglets, and farm-raised pheasants. Some of the non-predator conflicts involve damage from burning, grazing, digging the rangelands, row crop, crops, turf, gardens, buildings, dikes, dams, and fountains, and irrigation, its drainage systems. I verified a loss of just over 390,000 from those animals in Scotts Bluff County. For, for the next physical year contract, they're asking for an increase of about 5%. I think it's about 30 cents short of 5%. Bring your total up to just over $11,060.
What did we pay last year?
I don't remember exactly, it was $10,000.
Something.
Yeah.
I believe I remembered them talking about increases from that.
They were going to do a 25% this year and next year, and so now they would use that to apply...
Didn't we pay $19,000?
No, last year, I think...
That's what they requested, and we didn't do that, right?
But didn't you got, didn't, don't you have five counties that you're working for, and you needed $110,000?
Well, they said 104 between the five, and so...
We got to be paying over $20,000.
Between everything, I'm at, I'm at that now. The Union Pacific pitched in a healthy amount of money, and then I helped out on some projects. This year we got money for testing deer, so during deer season I did some testing, and they paid us quite a bit of money for that, so it really helped the counties out, not having to come up to where they wanted the counties to come up to.
Well, what we discovered last year, that unbeknownst to me exactly, but we started to understand that if we didn't do this, our liability or potential of payment was, what, 10 times more than this. And so, that's what I remembered. Do you guys remember that discussion?
That's correct.
If we didn't, if we didn't provide the service, landowners could send us the bill, so...
Right, and so, yeah, it was a, virtually I called it a no-brainer at that time, that it didn't...
It still exists, huh? Didn't you, don't you bill, you know, landowner?
For prairie dogs, we do.
Okay, did you do any prairie dogs last?
Yes, yeah.
So you, you billed on top of that?
Yes, yeah, so what the landowner gets for the county having our program is they don't have to pay for my salary, our wages, so they have to reimburse us for cost of payment to do that. And so with that, of course, since it is a reduced cost, the people requesting that is a lot. So just one person hired across five counties can't get to everybody every year.
There are some private contractors that do it as well.
Yes, yeah, so I, I do work closely with, with some of those and refer people that I can't get to, to some of those people that I know do a really good job.
So, so does that apply with the, with the, with that also? Can they bill the county?
No, no.
They can't as long as we're in, in contract with you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I remember.
Okay, what's board's pleasure?
Thank you.
Why move, make a motion that we approve.
I have a motion for approval of the contract as presented.
I'll second.
We have a second?
What's the amount on the contract? How much is it?
$11,060, is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, there's a few cents on there too.
We're not going to give you the cents.
Okay.
Just kidding. Whatever, whatever it is, it was $11,000.
Yep, 17 cents.
17 cents.
Where did that come from?
I don't know.
How do you, how do you reconcile that?
That's just how it came out, I don't know. Don't, Russ, that's one question I can't answer. I can tell you about your blood...
You're pretty darn good on the rest of them tonight, I'll tell you that.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, please record your votes.
He's going to show you where to sign. Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Contract, that is what he's going to say.
Which, which is, you want me to sign? There you go. You're back in business. Thanks, Matt. Okay, next item, discuss and consider approval of recommended personnel policy updated and approved by Personnel Board, and we have several of those. Lisa? Excuse me?
Don't we just do one a meeting normally?
One a meeting?
No, well, we're doing a differ this time. May twenty-fifth was our meeting, and um.
Our marathon meeting.
As Kelly commented, that we are going to approve each one individually, so if you have an issue with one, we can at least get the others all passed. So that's why we're discussing.
Whatever we need to do.
Yeah, which I think you're just gonna think they're all just fine, but you know. Okay, Russ. Uh, anyway, yes, it was a long meeting that night. We just, we had a lot of goo- good discussion. First policy, mandatory training policy. I believe I've been talking, I've, we've mentioned to you that we're putting forth some different training, trainings, I guess, in twenty-seventeen. They actually brought a physical person on site to do sexual assault training, sexual awareness training, no, not sexual awareness, but what harassment, harassment training. Sorry, I got Kim here so she can fill in my words for me. And, and we need to continually put this information in front of employees, just in case they forget, or you know, it's just, it's good practice. We're, we're told this is what you need to do to make sure everybody's educated, in case there would be a potential concern. So, we've put, we've used NERMA as a resource. They have some online training opportunities for us. And we put harassment training in front of our employees here about three months ago. Actually, it was at the end of last year, so it'd be more like six months ago. But what we don't have is anything to help us say, it's mandatory, we need you to do this, and what, and what if somebody just says, no, I'm not going to? Well, we wanted to get something in the policy to help us be able to say, our policy says this, and you agreed to the policy when you became an employee of Scotts Bluff County, that you would follow the rules and regulations. So, we put together a mandatory training policy, of which this is where we spend a lot of time talking about um, some of the barriers our officials are running into, trying to get their people to do. They're not saying we won't do it, but it's, it can be problematic for us to find the time to have our employees do this training. So, anyway, I will read to you what we've come up with so far. Mandatory training policy, it would be new, under fifteen fifty. The purpose of the policy is to set out the training employees are required to complete and the timeframe associated with such training. Ongoing training for employee. All employees are required to complete mandatory compliance training and as determined by the needs of Scotts Bluff County Human Resource Department. New employees will complete initial training during the onboarding process. Now, this is new, we, that, from the, came from the meeting. We've been doing our training sessions and asking the supervisors to make sure that they get the, that the employees complete. What came from our discussion is, why don't we put some of this training in front of the employees the first day they're with us for their two-hour session? Let's turn it into a four to six-hour session, and they can sit at a computer and complete the trainings on their first day before we send them out to their departments. So, employees that are assigned training, or training is not yet complete, must complete prior to their anniversary date. This will be a consideration, consideration and review during the employee's annual evaluation. Failure to complete training required under this policy within established time periods may result in discipline up to and including suspension, demotion, and termination. And with our discussion, we, with onboarding, we would put harassment, we're looking at privacy, we're looking at um, IT security policies, right at the get-go. That's the ones that come to my mind right now, but, and NIMS, sorry, NIMS. And the NIMS training, so, anyway, questions?
Now, okay, yeah, I do have. Uh, if you're trained during the probationary period, uh, failure to complete training, if you're terminated in a probationary period, you're, you don't have any strings attached. But if we let them go through the first year, then we've eliminated the probationary section, and they're, they're pretty well tied on, and how do you, how are you gonna let them go?
Is that what I have crossed out?
Yeah, you have, I, I would leave that probationary period in there, so it, it all fits under the probationary period.
Well, this is where part of the probationary, if we can get it cranked out in that first two days, they're an employee here, then probationary period.
Yeah, but it should be done within the probationary period, but if you're gonna move it on down, it eliminates them fitting into that probationary period.
Wasn't the discussion, partially, some of the trainings weren't always readily available? A lot of them could be done in that first, that first day or two days, but some of them needed to happen at, at other times, or they weren't available. Am I wrong with that?
Maybe within their departments.
Yeah, possibly.
This stuff, what, we're talking, would we be, would be available on their first day.
On the cau- on the county end of it, okay. And maybe I'm thinking of something else, but that's.
And we wanted to keep it open because, just because we do it during probation, doesn't mean we need to roll it out to everybody every couple of years. I mean, when I was a hospital employee, it was every year you did your mandatory trainings that were all online.
But your first main objective was to get the main, main training into them before, because you've eliminated, you just won't forget about, you know, your, what is it, dimension and determination, isn't it?
At the very bottom, at the very bottom.
Can you move his speaker to him? We can't hear.
Lean him back here too far. Can you hear me now? About now.
We're gonna get you a lapel mic.
Now you're talking.
And you can relax, so.
Tim, you, bring us, I don't remember what the discussion was, why we didn't leave that in, and we had a good reason for taking that out, but I don't recall what it was.
The reason is, is 'cause all the county required training would be done within their first day or a couple of days with them on their onboard, okay? The reason the other part got put in there is 'cause like, right now, we have a pretty good percentage of employees, in my opinion, that haven't taken sexual harassment training yet. So we need to have teeth to get people that aren't taking.
You've removed all your teeth now. Why don't you put that in there that says that you're gonna have all this training done within the first week, and then it's over, and you just put it in there?
Because we get, we get continuing trainings through IT or whatever, so both probationary period, all those new people are already gonna be trained with our stuff.
With our new, our onboarding process.
The stuff in their own office, that's between the supervisor and them.
I, I'm reading the section that you took out about new employees. You've just eliminated the new employees, uh, part of it. That, that new employee should stay right in there where it's at, because I agree that the rest of it fits on what you're doing, but the new employees ties into the final line, the final.
Well, the, the new employees comes in the first paragraph now, too. Will, uh, complete initial training during the onboarding process. That should have been read as, well, that was something new we added, but during our discussion. So what's the difference, Russ, if we have it sta- stated there, will complete initial training during onboarding, then they should already have it done?
Like I said, if you left that part in what you just said, that all the training for the new hires are gonna be within the first week, then it pretty well defines the new hires, and it reh- it separates the ongoing employee, but.
Well, okay, so my question, I agree that um, this solves the issue for new employees coming on, it seems to me. The question is, you just said, that there's a number of people out there that haven't done certain things, and what governs those people?
The next, the next red section, employees that are assigned training, or training is not yet complete, must complete prior to their anniversary date. This will be a consideration and review during the employee's annual evaluation.
And, and when it comes into consideration, if people aren't taking their training like they're supposed to, the supervisor or HR, I assume, to step in and make that decision that until these trainings are done, we're not gonna complete your review, because you have not completed your part. And that was part of our, that was a very long discussion.
Something over and above the, the onboard training.
Yeah.
Then, if that's what you're gonna do, then I'd like to see something on the evaluations that I've done. I've never seen anything about training on there. I think that needs to be addressed in the evaluations.
It's a new policy.
I know, I'm saying it needs to be added as well into the evaluation system as well. Don't you agree?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, like I said, it's new.
As long as you add it into the evaluation, so it can be evaluated, so you have, that puts the teeth into it when you tie it to the evaluation.
Well, the evaluation sheet just got updated, I think, didn't it?
And that could be included with what trainings still need to be taken or something.
That part would work then, if you tie it to.
Yeah, and that, that'd be easy to do. Kim, you could notify whoever is doing the evaluation, these trainings still need to be taken. Yeah, that's a good idea. Sure.
I agree, but it has to be.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Heather, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, what I was gonna say, you know, you talk about trainings continually being rolled out. We got new training from bites today. So, that would be something that's for everybody that is continuing additional training. So that would be training, but if they don't complete that, then that would probably.
But that, but that would be pertaining to your department only. Bite training is, is county-wide, okay. Gotcha, okay.
Well, if we can incorporate something into the evaluation.
Okay.
So I think, I think it'd be great, 'cause I don't think there's enough in that either, when you go through the evaluation.
Okay, so are you okay with this one, as we got several to go here?
Yeah.
Are you okay with this one? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval as presented.
I'll make a motion, approve it as presented.
Is there a second?
You're fine.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next one's discuss and consider approval of recommended personnel policy, uh, thirty-seven hundred.
Okay, this is a policy that exists, but as you can see by everything written in red, it's, that's all new information. So we're expanding the payday information. And payday for all county employees will be the last working day of the month. The county is required by federal law to make certain deductions from your wages. Such deductions include social security taxes, as what, well as federal, state, and any local withholding taxes. Civil deductions will be taken as directed by court order. Additionally, all voluntary deductions and authorized in writing will be made as directed by the employee. Voluntary deductions may include the employee's share of the insurance premium. Direct deposit is a safe and secure way to ensure employees receive their pay in a timely manner. Direct deposit is more convenient for employees and provides cost savings and efficiency for Co- Scotts Bluff County. Employees can either have pay deposited directly into one or more checking or savings accounts at any financial institution in the United States, or enroll in a PayCard program. If you have any questions about your paycheck or believe a mistake has been made on your paycheck, such as an underpayment or overpayment, contact payroll coordinator in the clerk's office immediately. We want you to receive everything you have earned. All employees' last paycheck may be a physical check to facilitate the checkout process, and to ensure county property is returned prior to departure. And what we've crossed out is payroll checks will not be distributed until the last working day of each month, except with authorization from an elected or appointed official. And we're taking that out because we just got all our employees on direct deposit. And there's no, yes, everybody is on direct deposit, and there's no more handing out payroll checks. So, that's why that's crossed out.
That's great, and I'm, I guess I'm asking, um, is it saying that here? That it's in a, a requirement?
Well, that's what, we put it in there, that direct deposit is a safe, yeah. Does it say it requires it? We don't give an option. First day, if you wanna be paid, you got to fill out the direct deposit form and determine where your check is gonna be.
I agree with all that. I'm not sure we're saying it, but I agree with all that.
You don't think we're saying it, right?
We are. I just don't think we're, this is describing direct deposit, and that it's safe and secure, but it doesn't say you must have a account to deposit this money into.
Why couldn't we just say that in there? You know, 'cause I, I borrowed this from the NERMA manual or somewhere. All. Help me, all depend, all payments, all employee.
So I agree with you, I, I just think we, we, we need to say this is a requirement. They can't change their mind later, they can't.
Deposited by a direct deposit.
Must be, must have a, either a account or something.
All payroll will be deposited into your deposit, your, your account.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with adding that, just, it's just stating the obvious, but yeah.
Tim, you see an issue with that? You're on the committee. Heather, okay.
It's just confirming what you've already said.
It's clarifying.
Okay.
Will, uh, reimbursement checks, mileage checks, and those sorts of things.
I like that, Lisa.
They'll, they'll still be paper checks, reimbursement, mileage checks, yeah, we aren't depositing. Yeah, that's through the, uh, accounts payable's process.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have any problem with it with that.
Okay, if not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Is, is that okay with everybody else? I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, do you have any discussion? Record your votes, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Next item.
And you have five yeses?
Next item, uh, personnel policy, ninety-three hundred.
Okay, I'm showing you ninety-three hundred and seventeen hundred at the same time here. Because we had a conflict in our policies, and I'm not gonna read through everything unless you request me to. But in, under seventeen hundred, under use of county-owned vehicles, we have a statement that says county-owned vehicles can be used to obtain or renew an operating license or commercial driver's license if approved by department head. Now, if we roll down to ninety-three hundred, the hu- the yellow part says county-owned vehicles can, are not, cannot be used to obtain or renew an operating license or commercial driver's license. So obviously, we're saying the opposite. Yeah, so we're removing, 'cause as far as we're concerned with the change in this, employees getting a CDL, we don't want to deter a potential employee. We will let them use our vehicles to help if they will, are driven to want to get a CDL, or to meet that requirement. And to be a roads employee at this point, they are supposed to get their CDL within, at one time, we said six months. I think we've extended that. Did we extend that last time, or is it? Okay, there you go. So, they aren't gonna get it in sixty days, especially if they come on and have to use our vehicles. But what we wanted to add to ninety-three hundred is county-owned vehicles can be used to obtain or renew an operating license or commercial's driver's license if approved by department head, which is exactly the same statement as what's being made up above.
It seems to me that, um, you know, there may be some of these people that certainly don't have a large vehicle available to them to get the CDL license, other than if they use the county vehicle to do it.
They're driving them, they're usually, uh, test-driving, they're taking their learner's, uh, run through it, you know, using those vehicles to look, do their learner's part of it. They just as well use it. We do the same thing with our new employees. We take our truck down, and they drive it, and then they drive it home.
They use your truck.
Use our truck.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, to ask them to have a semi or something available to them privately, um, that makes sense.
Yeah, you're gonna, we're gonna lose opportunities to fill our roads department. It's, that's our struggle right now. I think we're down three or four guys. People, not guys necessarily, so.
I don't have a problem with that.
I, we don't wanna be, have the.
Are we okay with combining, uh, policy ninety-three hundred and seventeen hundred into one motion?
We aren't combining, we aren't changing.
Motion, he said.
Into one motion?
Yeah, but two separate items on the agenda.
Separated, but he wants to know if you can just say yes, what, make this match.
The approval.
One change.
So I, I would, I would entertain a motion for approval of ninety-three hundred and seventeen hundred.
I'll second.
There's no change in seventeen hundred, no. We're only changing ninety-three hundred, not seventeen, isn't that right?
Really changing ninety-three hundred.
In ninety-three, she just showed you the seventeen where it's doubled up, is what she showed.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Gotcha, all right.
Seventeen doesn't change.
All right, so ninety, ninety-three hundred is the approval. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Next item is to section one thirty, or thirteen fifty. No. Thir- yes, thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty, reasonable accommodation, and this is a new policy. Again, this is part of some of the trainings we listen to. This is based, basically ADA compliance. Lot of information, so here we go, okay. Scotts Bluff County will make reasonable accommodations for individuals with disabilities, bona fide religious beliefs or limitations related to pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical dis- conditions to the extent required by law, unless undue hardship to the county would result. If any applicant or employee believes in good faith that he or she needs a reasonable accommodation, he or she must contact the Human Resource Department and request accommodation. Your request for accommodation should be made to supervisor and human resources. If any supervisor receives what he or she believes may be a request for an accommodation, he or she should work together with an employee and human resource to determine feasible options. And I think I just kinda double-stated a couple things in there, 'cause, yeah. The county is committed to participating in an interactive accommodation process with the employee. An employee who requests a reasonable accommodation will be normally, will normally be required to meet with the Human Resource Department to discuss the need for accommodation and to complete a written request for accommodation. The rewritten request for accommodation will include information regarding the nature of the employee's limitation or religious belief, how it affects the employee's ability to perform all essential job duties or access to benefits. The employee's suggestions for reasonable accommodation and other relevant information, sorry, I didn't say that word. For example, the county may require information regarding medical treatment of a disability or impairment, and information regard, regarding the healthcare provider who has provided such treatment. The county may also contact the individual's healthcare provider or other third parties, such as rehabilitation counselors, to verify the existence of the disability or impairment, obtain relevant medical information and/or records, and suggestions for accommodation. Requests for accommodation will be processed as quickly as reasonably practicable under the circumstances. Any individual who requests an accommodation is required to fully cooperate in the process, including providing relevant information and providing any required HIPAA consent in order for the county to contact and obtain information from the employee's healthcare provider. If the individual fails or refuses to provide any needed HIPAA consent, the county will terminate its processing of the individual's request for accommodation. If the individual is an employee, he or she will be expected to fully perform all essential accept, functions of his or her job without accommodation. Did I read that right? If the individual is an employee, he or she be expected to fully perform all essential functions of his or her job without accommodation, and may be subject to disciplinary or performance-related actions up to and including discharge if he or she is unable to perform all essential functions of the job. If the individual is an applicant, his or her application for employment will be, will be withdrawn from consideration. While a request for accommodation is being processed, an employee may be placed on paid or unpaid leave of absence, assigned to a different job, or provided with light or modified duty as determined by the county. An employee's base rate of pay will not, will not normally be changed while the employee's request for accommodation is being processed. Although it is not possible to make a comprehensive list of all possible accommodations that might be reasonable, the following, or are among the accommodations that might be reasonable depending on the circumstances. Modifications to the job application process, modifications to the work environment, modification to the methods by which a job is performed, providing special equipment or devices to per, perform a job, reassignment to an open job for which an employee is qualified or for which the employee can perform the essential job duties, providing a part-time or modified work schedule, modifying training methods and/or materials, providing readers or interpreters, and/or placing an employee on short-term leave of absence. Employees should understand that not all possible accommodations are reasonable in nature. For example, the county is not required to lower, lower its performance or behavior standards, eliminate essential job duties, bump another employee from a job, maintain an employee's compensation rate, or permit unscheduled or erratic unpredictable intermittent or excessive absenteeism or tardiness as a, as a reasonable accommodation. In addition, working from home, obtaining regular assistance from another employee to perform essential job duties, and eliminating certain duties in a job rotation are generally not reasonable accommodations, except in extraordinary circumstances. The ability of an employee to perform essential duties with the use of mitigating measure or devices such as medication or special equipment may be taken into account if determined whether an accommodation is needed or reasonable. For example, example, if an employee can control an impairment with medication or assistive device, and therefore, thereby perform essential job duties, no reasonable accommodation would normally be needed or reasonable. The county will determine if a reasonable accommodation is available. If more than one reasonable accommodation is available, the, the county may take into the account the employee's preference of accommod, accommodation. But the county has the right to make the final selection of the accommodation to offer to the employee. The employee has the right to refuse any accommodation that is offered by the county under this policy. However, the employee will be expected to fully perform all job function, all functions of the job without accommodation, and may be subject to disciplinary and/or performance-related actions up to and including discharge if the employee is not able to perform all essential functions in a manner acceptable to the county and as expected from other employees, who would hold the same job. Yes. You had a better way to say something, there was, I think I said the same thing twice.
Is this language specifically from NERMA?
Yes, it came from, Pam Born had a workshop in March where she was, of things that she recommended, that we make sure are in her manuals.
And is this?
Pretty much her verbiage, except we were looking at some of the beginning in our personnel board meeting, that it doesn't all have to rely on human resources, the supervisor can, can actively be involved to buy.
A stand-up desk.
A stand-up desk, of, a wrist rest, or.
A mat to stand on, you're gonna get the stand-up desk.
Yes, that kinda stuff, so.
'Cause I thought we had modified that policy so that they weren't required to just meet with you, they could talk to their supervisor.
And that's where it came down here, when I said at first, human resource, then you came, if any supervisor, okay, should be made to the supervisor and human resources, so I'm thinking right here is a duplicate.
I think that was covered, wasn't it?
I, I think we took out that part right there, he or she must contact human resources, and we left the rest of that sentence there. So, after accommodation, come down one.
Come down one, can I just cross all that out?
No. He, he or she, get rid of he or she, and put some from there, from there down.
Like, like, put a period after that accommodation.
Okay. So, I could like do font, and I could do a cross strike through. Something like that. And then we'd be sort of.
And then, in the second paragraph.
Yeah, and when we take things from the Pam Born source, I mean, she could be working with outside entities that have their own depart, um, human resource departments, where here, we're working so interactively with our different departments.
Would it be appropriate to have the county health department working on this?
I mean, they could be called in.
If it's occupational health-related.
Potentially.
You know, if there needs to be an evaluation, if someone says, "I want a standing desk," then maybe they need to be evaluated to see if they need, need a standing desk.
Would that be, would that be a job in the county health department, though?
I mean, it's, any more standing desks are getting.
I was gonna say, I think it sounds reasonable on its own period.
But that would be like, that would be like a reasonable request that they could ask me for and not necessarily have to go to human resources if I could accommodate them.
Right, I mean.
You know, if I couldn't accommodate them, then I would probably need to say, call Lisa and say, so-and-so needs a standing desk, I don't have that in my budget.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can you help me with that?
And, 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 well, the other reason would be if they came to you and said, "I need a standing desk," and you say, "No, I don't think you do," Lisa would be the next step up.
Right, yeah.
But you just took that out of the, where the supervisor. No, it's, it's, it's.
It's still, the supervisors are still there, just looking for how to run those two sentences together. I think these guys are getting me some.
The sentence is a little repetitive, I think we're trying to just simplify the sentence.
The, the whole thing is to protect us.
Yeah.
With, in today's environment, that's, that's the reason.
Well, and, and excessive, and I saw in there, 'cause I know we've had issues with employees being gone a lot, and that's a hard situation to deal with, when they come to you and say, "I've got a migraine, I gotta go." But they have migraines all the time. At some point, we have to have something to support us, saying, "We need someone that can do your job functions."
Or you have a.
Or what else can we do to accommodate you?
Or you have a long-time employee who's, whose health may be deteriorating, and they're not able to do the job that they did when they first started for one reason or another. And, and, so you have to accommodate, I mean, you have to do something, you know.
It's hard, yeah.
And that's, that's kinda where we're at in today's society.
Well, yeah, I don't know, uh, you know, from a legal standpoint, the question is, yeah, how much do you have to accommodate? I mean, there's a limit.
There is a limit, we do everything we can.
And that's what this policy's helping us put some sort of a limit in there, as long as we can get documentation together.
Yeah, that whole one paragraph is if you don't cooperate with us, and we aren't able to get the medical advice, that if you refuse to sign a HIPAA agreement to do that, then we are just gonna go back to, here's the job, we expect you to meet those needs, and if you can't, then maybe you're not our employee.
Here's the job you were hired to do, and this is what we expect you to do, if you're unable to do that.
And you aren't gonna cooperate.
And you aren't gonna cooperate with something different, then here, here we are.
We aren't.
If you're not gonna cooperate with something that we consider reasonable.
Yeah.
Then if you start to demand unreasonable things, and again, who gets to make that determination? We do, I think, we at least start there.
We do, yeah.
And then we may need some help from.
From NERMA, from Geta Legal.
Legal, yeah, legal people or whatever.
Oh, absolutely, this seems to be a topic we hear a lot from the Pam, Pam Born puts on a discussion every month. And she talks about ADA, ADA and FMLA a lot.
Well, I'm a little concerned about if this starts to be used for some kind of an issue like some woke issues and critical race theory issues, and several others, when we talk about religious and other things, because people can start to claim all kinds of things under the disguise of religion. And I'm concerned about that. And I don't wanna get taken advantage of.
As of right now, we don't have anything to protect us, and that's what this is doing.
So, this policy.
I hope that's what this does, I hope this protects us and not encourages other things.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're hoping that this policy gives us a place to start. We may have to modify this policy at some point down the road, but this is basically a NERMA policy, and we didn't have anything in place beforehand.
And it's language that NERMA is suggesting that we include.
Yeah, right now, we're wide open, we're wide open, Mark, to be honest with you.
Well, we are to one extent, I mean, I think we, I, I thought I've seen some stand-up desks already.
Oh, they're all over.
I've got one.
So.
Yeah, see, that's.
We've done reasonable accommodations without the policy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess.
You may have an employee who, you know, we, I don't think have had anybody bring up religious or anything else at this point in time that could happen, but we do. I mean, if I have an employee in my office that can't do everything, I may have to move them to a different position temporarily, you know, while they're recovering from surgery or something like that, you know? Just trying to, trying to make it so that we can work with people within our offices.
I think, um, as long as, again, we consider things reasonable, and I'll, I'll tell you that sometimes what's reasonable to me as a private employer is not the same reasonable to you when the county pays the bill, okay? And I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, yes and no, and we do need to be, that, it's, you're very right. And we need to be very cautious because we don't wanna be saying no.
Because we're a government organization, can't mean anything flies and anything goes. And that's my concern here. And, but, I'm, I'm o, you know, I think you've made some reasonable accommodations previously for the last thirty years, forty years, maybe longer. I think you've been doing it, I think there's evidence of that.
We're just putting it in words, you're right, we have.
Right, so.
We have some funds also that we could use towards if someone needed some sort of special.
But they, what they've added, what I'm seeing is, they give you all these things, but if you don't do what you're told to do, they can take them all back, and you'll have to look for somewhere else to work, it looks to me. I think it's really a good policy, what I'm seeing.
So, I.
About that, Mark, you know, your concerns is the way that this is, you know, can be between supervisor and human resources, so, I don't know, just as an example, human resources can't come in and say, "You're gonna pay this person, even though they can't perform the job." Supervisor and human resources are gonna have to discuss that, supervisor's gonna have to say, "This is what I need to have done by this employee, this is their description," you know, and they have to work together to make sure, that's just an example, I don't see that happening.
One of the questions I, um, then have again, is, I think I've already asked this before, but we have everybody back working onsite, right?
We didn't, oh, yeah, we really never had them offsite.
We don't have anyone. What's that?
We really didn't have many offsite.
Only the assessor.
Well, sure we did.
Not many.
Not many.
Well, maybe not many, but we certainly had people work from home.
I still do, but, I mean, off-hours, but I'm here, here during basic hours, yes.
I'm talking about during the COVID time, we certainly had people that did things from home.
Oh, well, yes, you're right.
Obviously, in the assessor's office, obviously, in the register of deeds office, we had that happening. And so, my, my point is, it's not happening now, right? And that, again, we would be able to monitor and deal with that in this kind of a situation, the way I'm seeing it. Okay.
How's that for a start?
I, I just don't wanna get taken advantage of here, and I'm trusting that we won't.
No.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're inviting anything with this, Mark, I think what we're doing is protecting ourselves with it.
I hope so.
That's, that's, that's the way I.
I'm willing to take a chance.
This is one of the things that we had a long discussion of that, that night, we were here till a long time.
When this came out, I was actually surprised we didn't have something like this in our handbook, or.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, again, it's, I think it's standard, um, you know, when you talk about people with disabilities or whatever, you've gotta do this anyway, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I have a lot of experience in this particular area. I had to deal with, uh, reasonable accommodation frequently in the cotton, uh, agency I worked for. And I also did a lot of investigations on whether it was valid. It's really rare that you have anybody make their fraudulent claim, it's pretty rare. The vast majority of people that claim a reason for an accommodation are factual, and I would coordinate with their healthcare provider to verify that. And there was few cases that were fraudulent. I went to great length to videotape, interview, take statements, work with the inspection service, and eventually, those employees were weeded out, but it took time. But it's really a pretty rare thing to actually try to fraudulently claim a reasonable accommodation.
I don't have a problem with trying to.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of the, of the, uh, policy as presented.
That's thirteen fifty, right?
Thirteen fifty, yes. I, I will move approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a little bit too.
Next one is, uh, discuss policy eighteen hundred.
Okay, and we're just looking at a piece of eighteen hundred, we're trying to, um, work with our dress code. And, um, so we're looking under appearance. It starts, "All employees shall maintain a high standard of dress, personal grooming, and hygiene during workouts, and contribute to a pleasant work atmosphere. Clothing shall be in good taste and reflect the pertinent working conditions." And what we wanna add or remove, well, first of all, the people of the county pay your salary and, and are entitled to efficient, courteous, and businesslike service. We would rather state, "Employees are encouraged to consult with their supervisor whenever necessary regarding acceptable dress for their working area." Taxpayers, did, we did add that, "Taxpayers judge the quality of county government based on appearance and hygiene of our employees. Failure to comply with this policy can lead to disciplinary action." I never said hygiene ever twice.
Government-based, I don't know, county-based on principle, on all the county government.
"Taxpayers judge the quality of county government based on the appearance and hygiene of our employees." I guess we could take out the hygiene the second time, because it is stated above.
I, I don't know, I, I don't think that's a mission.
Personal grooming and hygiene, you're.
Hygiene's fine. But depending on what department you're working at.
That's right.
You know, we don't, we don't expect our, our greater operators to, you know, they're gonna wear a ball cap and a, you know, work, work clothes. But if you're working in one of our offices down here where you're meeting the public, and you show up in a, in a t-shirt and a ball cap, I'm thinking that may not be appropriate. We're talking more hygiene. I think if you have them showered for three days, you probably might wanna keep your.
This is clothing in good taste and reflect the pertinent working conditions.
Exactly.
And that, yeah, building and maintenance is gonna be different than Heather's office.
Exactly.
And so, and, and that, yeah, that's obvious.
That's up to the department heads. That's, that's right.
Right.
But if we need to shower, I think we should leave that right where it's at.
It's stated more than once?
Okay.
Uh, well, certainly what, what we're taking out is a true statement, but it might be a bit much.
But it, it's, I think, kind of rewritten.
It is a bit.
It's, it's kind of rewritten into the other sentence about the taxpayers.
I'm okay with the change.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have an issue? We got no, no, we got another. All right, I entertain a motion for. Well, we got another page on this yet. What? We still have another page on this yet to go. Yeah, I, no, I understand.
But this is just for eighteen hundred.
This is for eighteen hundred.
Yeah, we just, oh, 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 this part, I think, I'm sorry, I did not take that out. Um, well, this was some samples Kim and I had put together to say, how, how do, would you like this in this, and we kept it pretty basic. I think what we wanted to present to you is up here.
Let's, let's put some, let's leave that right in there as well. They can always work it out later. Just examples.
Well, this, well, this, this isn't truly in the policy. This was just our, hey, here's some other ways to discuss. It gets real detailed.
Can you wanna just read through it, kinda give it to us?
You want me to read through the, okay, like I said, it's not in the policy. This was.
Lisa, is what you're trying to say is it's not a recommendation of your personnel board?
Yeah, it's not recommended.
We, we had only recommended that change to the paragraph up above.
This front page.
That's right. That's the only recommendation that's before us tonight.
Well, the thing is, we want to remember that page when you put your.
Oh, yeah.
This could be included with it as just a a, uh.
Funny things happen when you're.
Reference, I guess.
The topic, I think, was brought up as to whether or not we needed to put anything more specific in there, but we decided to just change the second paragraph.
Well, it's, it's going to be the decision of the department head or elected official.
Yeah.
Of whether or not they're, they're properly attired and showered.
It looks like. This part's easy because it's, it's a minor change to what we have right now.
Yeah.
This back here is a total new addition and.
And we didn't use it, like I said.
And you're saying you didn't discuss.
We did not do anything with that.
So the personnel policy board's recommending this.
The first page.
Yeah, the second page was more of a, just give us some ideas to utilize if we.
You forgot to remove it off of.
Yes, I forgot to remove it off what I gave you.
Okay.
It was a really long meeting.
So.
Yeah, that's, she just pointed out, Kim will catch that.
I would move approval of.
Policy.
Change of.
Yes, Kim, there should be a three here.
Policy eighteen thousand point zero zero one, this front page.
Paragraph two.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion for.
Sorry for the confusion.
Have a motion for, uh, recommend approval of, uh, eighteen hundred as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
There, I can just do that.
Okay, okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you.
Six o'clock.
Next item, discuss and consider approval of biennial steps six through ten.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if you have the wrong one. This is our current pay scale, at least the hourly pay scale. And to refresh you, employee comes in, they usually start, if they're new to the county, have limited prior experience, they're gonna step on, start on step one of whatever pay range their job is scaled at. So we start at, some of our positions downstairs are on range eighteen, step one. They're gonna start at sixteen dollars and fourteen cents an hour. And then every year, they can progress up if they're in their first five years with the county. But once they hit year after year six, then the increases come every other year to move from six to seven, and then seven to eight. And then it's eight to nine and nine to ten. Then after that point, we didn't used to have a step eleven, twelve or thirteen, but if you are seasoned and on step ten, after five years, you move to step, you can move to step eleven, kind of a reward. It's an, I think, a five percent increase. A reward for staying with the county, and another five years, you could move to twelve. So all in all, let's see, help me, this is five years, fifteen, up to, gosh, thirty, forty years?
It takes twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years to get clear to ten or twelve, clear.
To thirteen.
Twelve, okay, so that would be a person with a lot of longevity.
And the, the second group, that says five percent, so is that two and a half?
Okay, I'm, I'm using current right now. So this is part of my presentation to you. This is our current policy. What's being proposed to you is to revise it so that every other year, instead of just moving up two and a half percent, we would make six to ten, five percent increases. Cause you wait two years to go from six to seven, where the first between step one and two is a two and a half percent increase. It used to be one through ten, we're two, two and a half percent between steps. And now we're proposing, okay, so you get an annual increase for one through five, six through ten. It's gonna take every other year to get an increase, but let's make up the two and a half percent, and let's make it five percent increases between steps.
Every two years.
So the paper we have in the packet is what you're proposing, what you're, you're, we don't have the current in our packet. We just, we just have the revised.
Probably, yeah. Probably, that was just.
The current, yeah, the current says that between step seven and eight, you would only get a two and a half percent increase. The request was between seven and eight, you would get a five percent increase.
Which is technically two and a half per year.
Per year. You would just have to wait a year to get the second two and a half percent.
So, how, how does a cola fit into that as well?
You still get a cola.
Huh?
The cola's in addition to this.
A cola's gonna raise, every one of them, three percent.
It's gonna raise its whole chart.
Yeah, it just bumps the chart up.
So you, if you had a three percent cola and you do a five percent increase, you're really gonna be at eight percent if you, if you would do that.
It could happen, if you were a person that was that long, if you were a person's been there that long, that they would be up to the seven and eight, nine.
This would be, cause you're a union, people are on a different scale.
Union are on a different scale, yeah. This is just your other, all other county employees who are not union. Okay.
Tim?
The premise of this, the reason this is brought up is because of how the original work scale right now is written between s- six and seven. If you, if you figure it out by the year, you get about one and a quarter percent increase. While those below you are getting one every year, they're still getting two and a half percent. So all this is really trying to do is make it where you're not starting to lose money as you become more seasoned and a, you know, well-known employee, is how I would call it, you know, in their office. To those lower than you. And, and the other thing is, is if, if you're giving people the raise across the board, you know, they might have to wait two years, but it's the same as those below them, you know, moving up the, the steps, I guess. Uh, you're not gonna have seasoned employees grumpy about that, in my opinion, towards maybe newer employees that are getting two and a half percent, you know? Yeah, things are great for the first, they get to step six, and then you're hanging out.
Then you're shut down.
And everything just is deeper enough, you know?
Wow.
So.
What we're really talking about again is, we're talking, these being step increases plus cola increases, right? Isn't that pretty much the, the two increases basically that they have ability to get? And so if we give them cola increases that is, um.
Based on the budget?
Yeah, in line with CPI or whatever else we wanna talk about, then that keeps them up with inflation, so to speak.
Right.
Or not, sometimes, or better sometimes.
This is a performance-based increase.
And then this gives them.
It's more performance-based.
Yeah, a step, but it's performance-based but guaranteed. I love that, but if it was performance-based.
Well, and you have to remember that by the time that they hit step thirteen, you would have a person that has worked in the same job in the same position for twenty-nine years. So it's gonna take them a while to get to that.
Well, step eleven, twelve and thirteen.
Are every five years.
Right, and it's five percent, so you're talking one percent per year.
What, I think, are those five percent increases?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's one percent per year.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not, um, really having a problem with that. Um, two and a half, and it's two and a half down here. Performance-based to me would be something of, they have.
It's not over the top on that at all, but.
No, in that, again, hopefully, experience means something, right?
It is to me. When I have employees work ten years for me.
Right, experience means something, and this provides some um, advantageous things for experience for that person. And it certainly should mean that.
And again, coupled, coupled with a, coupled with a satisfactory performance evaluation.
Yeah, that's one of the things here where you can control someone that's not performing.
That's correct.
Is that if, if they don't have a good performance evaluation, they don't get this, right?
Or excessively gone, or some other issue, yeah.
Other issues, right. Not keeping up with their training, those kind of things.
So it has a handle on it, so it's pretty good.
All right.
Okay?
I can live with it.
All right.
I'm easy tonight, buddy.
I know, we're all going.
You shocked me just now.
We are in awe.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a, a motion for approval of the biennial step six through ten, please.
I'd make a motion, too.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
I just had a question. The last time this came up, I think we also had another personnel policy that was regarding the performance evaluations and how, how those, how that tied in with this. And, you know, the question was, where does the, um, employee get held accountable? You know, is it, um, pri- it is primarily through the supervisor or department head. Um, but then also, I wanted to see some language in there where we talked about excessive tardiness or, or absences and that kind of stuff. That piece would be handled.
There is a piece on the new evaluation form.
Okay.
For tardiness and attendance.
Okay. I just want it to be uniform. So like if, if someone, if someone has excessive tardiness or absenteeism.
That's gonna drag their overall.
They're not gonna, right.
That's gonna drag their overall, you know, if I, if we rate them on a scale of one to five for everything that they do, if they have a one for attendance and time, that's gonna drag their.
I want there to be something uniform that says, you know, ten absences is a one, and two absences is a five, or, or vice, cause I don't, I don't, I don't want Sally over in Rhodes to, to have ten absences but get a five, and then Joe over in Veterans Office has two absences and, and gets the same number, the same score. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, we did have a policy last time, like you said, where we were trying to quantify the disciplinary charges if a person is excessively absent. And after three write-ups, then we can terminate, how that went, I can.
And that was left up to the, either the department head or an official to monitor that.
I think it was excused absences or no call, no show or something like that.
Yeah, after three no, three unexcused, no call, no shows.
No call, no show.
Immediate termination and, yeah, we, we did address that. Now, as it, is it on the actual job eval? I think if you have a person that's excessively absent, I department officials, I mean, it's, 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 it does affect your.
It affects you.
Well, there should be.
Coverage, and I think they're going to, we give them the tool to.
The, the, the proper tool would be a write-up for that at the time of the evaluation, prior to.
And there's also the.
Or, um.
What's your, the PIP form?
Performance Improvement Plan, that you can also say, this is our expectation, and you have six months to keep your, to make these changes.
Not necessarily. Like for a new employee, they're still on probation for six months, but you can, you can do a performance improvement plan with an evaluation and say, we'll come back and look at this in six months and see where we go from here, whether or not things have gotten better or worse.
They could still be on probation, but that, that was your thing.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Any other discussion? If there are none, please record your votes.
What part specifically are we voting on here?
On the, uh.
Oh, we're still voting on this?
Six through ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay to close?
Close, please. All right, next, uh.
And you gotta let me call it, uh, five yeses?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I got a lot of buttons to hit over there.
Next one is to consider recommend policy for section seventy-two oh four.
Okay, sick leave policy. Tim White brought a concern to me, and we actually ended up looking over a few more items on the sick leave. Everything in black is not changing. If you wanna go through that, we can, but are also just skip right down to the concerns. General procedure. B, an employee shall be entitled to utilize sick leave for injury, pregnancy or sickness which renders an employee incapable of performing his or her job duties for medical and dental care or for exposure to contagious disease under circumstances in which the health of other employees or the public would be endangered by employees' attendance on duty. What we're removing is employees shall not be entitled to utilize earned sick leave for a willful self-inflicted injury. We thought that could be a problematic statement.
What would you do willfully? Well, if you're out riding a motorcycle and you get hurt.
Willfully or.
You shouldn't be here.
I didn't say, does that mean you can't use your sick, I'm. It's like this. It's the.
You, you broke, you broke your leg riding a motorcycle.
Yeah.
You can't come to work, but you have sick leave. Well, that's an accident. Th- this is willfully. I, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
You guys.
You, you need, you need to come up to the mic, please. You need to come up to the mic, please.
What if somebody hits you on the motorcycle?
I'm sorry, that, that way we get it.
Bring your helmet with you.
I didn't know what that was when you brought it in, I'm sorry. Okay, that's okay.
No, what if someone hits you, though? It's not your fault that you're gone.
But, but you've, but you've had a, but you've had a non, but you've had a non, a non, uh, employee or non.
Say, of course you can use.
What, I lost the word. You weren't working when you were injured, how's that?
It's her form of transportation to work, though.
That's not how I'm reiterating. It says you're, if you were hurt willfully, that means you'd either have stabbed yourself, you would have.
Right. That's how I'm taking self-in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, and I think other people may have taken it that way, which is one of the reasons why we decided to take it off.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that I found it as an issue, because if, if we have an employee that has that, you know, something going on like that, in my opinion, a supervisor should be at least directing them to the EAP or trying to help them, you know, otherwise losing employee, and if they can't use their sick leave for that, well, probably run them down the wrong road, honestly.
Right.
Cause if you're hurt, if you're hurt at work, you've got, you've got work comp that's gonna handle it. If you're work, if you're, if you're injured while you're not working, you still have sick leave that you can use to cover your expenses.
Correct.
Or your time off. We would have to prove willfully, and I don't know how you would prove willfully.
I don't do, no, and.
Yep.
And who knows how long that.
It's just, it's poorly, it's poorly worded, I think.
And I just found it on accident one day. I'm like, this is a big problem, and.
Well, yeah.
Tim, Tim was a busy, was a busy board member.
Sounds like, I see that.
It's very.
Tim?
He's a busy, busy guy.
Be easy next time, too, Mark.
And seven hundred and twenty hours worth, of course, right?
What's that?
Seven hundred and twenty hours worth.
Is what that you can max out at.
Right.
Yeah.
That make sense?
No, it doesn't make sense to me, but.
No, no.
But I understand the policy.
It's, um, oh, it makes sense, but yes, it's like, it's a whole nother issue, yeah. Okay, so this next section we're going to, sick pay, sick pay will be paid only for approved absences or for time when the employee would normally be scheduled to work. And what we added, employees on sick leave for three. And what we added, employees on sick leave for three consecutive days must submit a physician's certificate in order to receive sick pay unless waived by the department head. The cost of any, if any, of the certificate shall be paid by the employee. And because we've always said, if you're gone three days, you need to have a doctor's note. Well, we never had it in writing, so we put it out there.
But again, it's at the discretion of the department head or elected official.
Yeah, like I said, that's it. We've always told people that, and I've always been told people that if you're gone for more than three days, you need a note, but we never have anything in writing, so we are just backing what we.
What we say.
Yeah.
And unwaved by the department head, if you, COVID, you're supposed to quarantine five days. I mean, if you go take a self-test and you have, it says you have COVID, I don't need you to go to the doctor to tell me that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you for your word.
And the COVID, the COVID concern was brought up by Deb from the Health Department, yes. That was something.
And all, all of those things have changed too now, haven't they?
Yeah, I don't know what the current guidance is. I just have, I know at the beginning of the year it was still five days.
Right, and that guidance is, yeah, totally different than what it used to be.
Yeah, I don't know that it went away.
I don't, I think it's.
It's still five days, quarantine five days.
If you, if you are, um, diagnosed.
That's not even CDC, that's not even CD recommendation anymore.
Yeah, I'm not sure it is, but, but.
Like I said, beginning.
If you're simply exposed to someone, those rules are.
That was gone. No, it's when you've tested.
Yeah, that's.
That's gone.
Okay, and we have, we have some more on this policy yet.
Okay, employee, elected and appointed officials in consultation with Human Resource Director, if necessary, reserve the right to require a doctor's statement for any absence. A physician's authorization to return to work may be required. Doctor's authorization must document the employee was under the doctor's care and state the employee's ability to return to work. It must also state whether employee will be under any medical restrictions. That was something we wanted to add, that's new. And then the last section. An employ- I'm gonna read, try to attempt to read it how it stated before and how I'm, how we kinda discussed it should be. An employee may use sick leave when medically necessary for, for the employee to care for family members or of another person residing in the same household due to an illness, disability, or injury. Any accrued vacation must be used thereafter. The elected appointed official in consultation with the Human Resource Director may require a doctor's statement or other acceptable certificate of the illness, disability, or injury. The last statement we removed because we've addressed it in D, our new, our new D. But, um, let's see, an employee may use sick leave when medically necessary for the employee to care for a family member or other situation approved by department head discretion. We didn't feel we needed to go down to which family members were the ones that needed to be, that you could use your sick leave to assist. So, before it just said anybody in the same household, I think I started off by saying certain members of your family, your, your parents, or your children. Well, anyway, what's your disagreement?
I disagree with department heads overriding policy.
I disagree with department heads overriding policy there. Can you hear me now?
Department head discretion. Else would we say it?
Remove department heads.
Care for a family member or other situation, I mean, approved by.
Part, part of the reason that was brought up, Tim brought it up, you, you have situations in a family where it may not be a, it may not be a, um, a child of, of the, of the employee. May not be a mother, may not be a father, may not be a blood relative. You may be caring for a niece or a nephew, uh. It, it could, it, it could be somebody else that is in your care, that is, that, that you're taking care of. And, and you, I mean, the list goes on and on of.
So, for example, I used to have an employee who was the medical power of attorney for a disabled sister who did not live at her home, but she had to be at all of the doctor's appointments and things like that, so.
I know the feeling, I've done it four or five times. Three brothers, two brothers, sister.
And when you start, when you start getting specific as to who you can take care of, that's, that's why they, they put it in there at the department head discretion. I don't know that they're actually overriding anything, but I think if you make, if you, if you make the, if you make the, the, uh, situation known to the department head, I'm taking care of my disabled sister, I'm taking care of my disabled nephew.
My grandchild.
Grandchild.
Yeah.
Mom and dad are no longer here, and I'm taking care of them. I think that's up at the discretion of the, of the department head. That's, and that's the reason it was put in. And, and again, in today's society, we have more, we see more and more of that.
I'm sure we can get a day off if we needed it.
Well.
I've done it many, many times.
You know, this whole thing reminds me of the simpler method of taking all this stuff and call it PTO time and make it PTO. And then it doesn't matter really whether it's sick or take care of a family member or vacation or whatever else. You call a PTO and you don't really have to justify almost anything.
Well, you still need to request vacation.
Well, you have to request it.
And you weren't planning on taking care of a sick niece.
You, you need to request all of these.
Everything.
Right.
Well, I don't, I don't get a request for, I'm sick, I'm not gonna be there today.
I understand that.
The, the only problem.
You do, you get a notification at least, right?
The only problem I have with that, Mark, and it came up, is that until we change the policy, is getting paid for unused sick leave.
The, um.
Sick leave is to be used when you're sick. That is not a vacation day, that is not any, anything else. So if you bundle everything under paid time off.
There may be some issues as far as bringing, if you ever went to that, which I don't think you will.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with it.
But if you ever went to it, there may need to be a reconciliation period where you say, hey, we got, if we're gonna do that, we have to do this. And I understand that, but.
I left ninety days of sick pay on the table when I got elected. I didn't use them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're not paid out. And would PTO be paid out, is my question.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, careful what you wish for.
Well, of course, as I think of PTO time and vacation time and some other things, I'm not thinking thousands of hours like some other people might be. I'm not thinking that. Okay? Because when you start adding these up, you're talking thousands of hours.
You could, you could. You know, we don't pay out sick time. I think, well, some of the union contracts do, but we don't. Just their vacation.
We used to, but we don't anymore.
Yeah, I'd say that's.
But again, I'm, I'm also a believer that again, sometimes sick leave gets used inappropriately, sometimes, right?
Well, like you said, Kelly just demonstrated she left it sitting there, and we do have people who max it out. I mean, it's gone.
Some people, some people who lose it and could have maybe used it, some of it, and didn't because they're loyal and faithful and hardworking people. And some that abuse the system.
You find that some people use every single bit of sick pay and vacation that they get, and some people would rather come to work.
Right, and I, I love the thought that those people that, um, don't abuse the PTO time can use it for other reasons.
This could be vacation time.
Right, they can use it for more, time off, for whatever the case, but that's a whole different subject.
Yeah.
You need to address it sometime in the personnel policy.
That, that would be set time for another long meeting.
Yeah. Tim, you could be working on something like that. Keep your mind focused on some.
Yeah.
Good productive things.
Well, right now, the way the sick leave is written, I believe, there's a piece in there that if you don't use sick leave for a year, you get an extra day because you've been here the whole time, you know, the entire year, you haven't used any sick. And, and that is actually a benefit to the county, in my opinion. You're trying to give people a reason to not use sick leave and to come to work and stay healthy, you know. I'm not saying come to work while you're, you know.
I've earned that before.
While your trash can out in the middle of the day kinda deal, but.
Right, but.
You know.
I'm, I'm not against incentives to have people work.
Yeah, it is, it is in there.
And not sure how you do that with just straight PTO, you know, so. Something interesting. Okay?
So what's the board pleasure on, uh, personnel policy seventy-two oh four as presented?
I make a motion we approve.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And we have three yeses and two noes.
Okay, vote passes.
I don't think I've seen the red stripe very often.
I tried it out.
What I'm gonna say, Russ had to check it out one time before.
Okay, next item.
Give me just a sec, please, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I wasn't gonna let it go that easy, buddy.
We got close to a perfect record.
They can't all be yes.
Okay, I'm caught up, Ken.
Alright, next item, discuss and consider ratification, county clerk's signature on the special designated license for Panhandle Co-op. Kelly?
Heather, help me. We have a. Panhandle Co-op is gonna have an event at Legacy of the Plains on June thirteenth.
This is, um, this is the special designated liquor license that I called each of you about, um. It was brought to my attention and Brenda's attention that nobody had ever applied for this, and it's a SDL for the Treasures Dinner that we're going to be having at the Legacy of the Plains, um, in next week when the Treasures Workshop, um, will be in Geary.
And to add to that, she worked through the sheriff's office. Sheriff did not have any issues with it, Troy. Everything was alright with all of that.
When, when I spoke to Troy, he said that there had never been any issues with the SDL for Co-op.
So we're asking, we're asking permission for that.
We already got permission individually from each of you, and we're asking you to accept that today.
We're just asking that you ratify Kelly's signature.
We just need to ratify it here.
I made a commotion.
What's that? And you say no?
And you told her yes.
And you'll be drinking Pepsi.
We'll be busing everybody back to their hotel.
Okay, good idea.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion for approval. Will you second the motion? Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, record your votes.
Is it okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item, discuss designation of the twenty-twenty-three official county newspaper. Charlie, you wanna lead that one?
I think, did you miss one?
Um.
What?
Yeah, we gotta do one other one first.
I'll take one more.
Oh, which one? Which one am I doing here?
Energy efficient formula grant.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Discuss and consider energy efficient formula grant through the EECBDG program. Kelly?
Just, I received a phone call and I think it was Wednesday or Thursday. There was a formula grant, and somebody from the Department of Energy was reaching out stating that Scottsbluff County was like the top ten populous counties in Nebraska. There's seventy-six thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty dol- two, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars in grant money. She made sure to let me know that there is no, it's a zero cost match to the county. And, like I said, this was last minute, because I did attend that groundbreaking, so your pack, your packet with this stuff is really, there's a lot of information here that I haven't even looked at. Just I wanted to put it before you guys to let you know. There was a deadline, she told me, that had been extended. Whatever the literature says, April twenty-eighth, but the deadline, and I think it's just to fill out the application, not necessarily what you, how you wanna spend the money, has been extended to July thirty-first. And wanted to know if it's anything you wanted us to work on.
Yes.
What, uh, what can the money be used for?
I haven't read it, Russ. That's what I said. I, I, I don't know, there's just things for, I said, like new windows?
Okay, new windows, I'll vote for.
Well, but I mean, I don't know, there's, there's a long list of things.
I, I, yeah, I'm like, I'm like you, I don't.
I, I, you know, some of those things have a lot of strings attached, and I don't think we wanna get tied up unless we understand what we're buying.
Well, zero co- zero cost match, and typically when folks reach out to you to say, we're extending the deadline, be. They're, they're, they need to give the money away.
Nobody else signed up for it.
There's only.
It's because they didn't do a good job.
It says there's ten people that it was calculated for. It's federal grant money.
So my question is, so who, staff-wise, how does this get dealt with?
I don't know. I just wanna make sure you do.
It's a question.
Oh.
I've been, I've been working with COVID grants.
Can I forward that email? I mean, I don't, I don't have something to jump out to you.
My suggestion would be, because we have so little information that we table this, until we have more information to take any, some kind of action on.
See what it's about and see if we can even.
Let someone look into it, whoever's got time, look into it, get, get back to it.
Nobody has time.
Right. I don't mind, I don't mind tabling it for us, but to, i- if we wanna assign it, if we're able to assign it to some staff people, we oughta do that now.
Right, Kelly's the one who received it, so maybe.
And I said, who do I tell this to?
Yeah, I know, well.
Does she have the only printed copy?
Yeah, we don't, we, we don't have anything on it, so I.
What?
It was on your packet.
It was on the computer?
Oh, wow.
I'll say, I can come back in a minute, too.
Um, say that, oh, it's that one, yeah, it's a stapled one.
This, the one I said was thick in your packet is the one.
Oh, okay.
Do you have it real?
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, we do.
Can I see it? Can I see it?
Lisa, the, I made a, uh, the copies were in color, so you can tell the links, but I can forward this email to you.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm gonna say, if you put it in their board packet, I should have it there, I just didn't look.
Okay, again, again, I would suggest we table this, so we have a little more.
See what it's gonna take to meet the requirements.
Information on it.
I think, I think honestly, if we just say that, yes, we were interested in it, we haven't, it's not even about filling out the grant paperwork yet.
Okay, can you respond back to that, Kelly?
If Lisa tells me, that's how I'm supposed to do it. Can I try and put this one for the next meeting, then? I mean, just so we could put it under old business, maybe?
That would be fine.
Can I ask if, um, Lisa, are you saying that you can look at it? Is that what I heard you say?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I wanted to see if I could quickly see what it involved. So.
Could you give us a, could you spend a little bit of time looking at it and give us a little report at the next meeting?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I would, I would, I would entertain a motion to table this till next meeting.
Oh.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, there's a whip.
Check it.
Record your votes, please. Oh, is there any more discussion? I'm sorry. You should have discussion before you vote all the time. Good. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And we have five yeses?
Thank you. Now, move on. Discuss designation of the twenty-twenty-three official county newspaper. Charlie?
Um, I brought this up at the last meeting, uh, just with my concerns. And I think the whole county, every resident in the county has concerns about the service that we're receiving from the Star Herald. Um, and what the future holds for the Star Herald. I noticed that the deputy director or deputy editor of the newspaper is here tonight. Would you be able to answer some questions, Monette?
I don't know if I can answer questions, but you have a letter from Kevin, who's the publisher and, uh.
Okay.
So I can try to answer the questions, I don't know if I can answer the questions, but. Because some of your questions, I have, some of your questions might not be in, something isn't like, do you?
Okay.
So. I can try.
Um. Okay.
Hopefully this letter answers some of those questions. Um, Kelly and I talked and she had some questions this morning about different legal things, and so I tried my best to answer those as well.
Um, a lot of the concerns, you know, started when, um, other counties told us about their difficulties advertising in print media. When, when a newspaper doesn't run six days a week or seven days a week, um, and the timing of getting notices to a newspaper. And the, just the logistical issues that we will run into in the future. You know, putting out our public notices. Um, you know, we wanna be able to serve our, our constituents as, as well as possible, as thoroughly as possible. And it's my belief that, um, publishing public notices, um, need to be, or I'm sorry, published. Public notices need to be free for the consumer to, to access. Um, so my first question is, is the public notice section of the E edition? Free for all, free for anyone?
I do not know that. Um, I would presume that it's not because it's in the newspaper, but the public notices will be in that print edition. That they will be published on Tuesdays and Thursdays and, you know, the newspaper, the print edition's always been charged for, so. Um, so it would be the same concept where I have to pay to go get a print paper.
Sure.
Um, then, you know, the E edition basically is just a digital replica of that.
Okay.
So, um.
I guess my, you know, that's another.
Whether or not that is, like, you can access that and not be a subscriber, I don't know, I'd have to test it.
Okay.
Myself.
So that's another, that's another point, reason why I believe tr- traditional, um, legacy media is no longer the answer for. Public notices. There's so many more free and less expensive options, um, to post and publish, um, public notices. And if they're public notices, they should be free for the.
I do know that the Nebraska Press Association has a public notice section on its website, um, that our public notices feed into.
Okay.
And that is, I believe that is open from checking it on my own, but like I said, it's been a while since I've been into it.
Um, with the changes at the Star Herald, will any portion of the newspaper be printed at the Scottsbluff office location?
I don't know that, that's not in my thing. I, all I know is that according to the statute, the production, the printing can be done off-site. And then the, and then the piece that makes us a legal newspaper is the production, so that would be the editorial, the advertising, stuff like that. And that's allowed and held up by legal precedent, that, that piece, you don't have to print onsite, and that's been, that statute. Or that precedent, legal precedent, dated clear back to the nineteen seventies. If you go and look at the statute, there's a, a lawsuit at the bottom of it. And it says right there in that lawsuit that that, and it was a small-town newspaper, they did not have to print onsite to still be considered a legal newspaper.
Right, that was, that was a Supreme Court case, um, against the Wymer newspaper.
Well, the Wymer newspaper, from what I understood from reading it, had sued the county commissioners of a county as they tried to reneg on a contract regarding public notices, so. And it held that, it was upheld that they did not have to print onsite and, uh, none of your legal newspapers in Scottsbluff County. The Business Farmer and the, um, Voice News of West, Voice, Voice News of Western Nebraska, flip their things sometimes. None of them print in the county. We were, we are the last one that has any printing that goes within.
But you don't know if the, for, any printing will take place in the future?
I would assume not. I, I know that the editing and all of that stuff and design happens, because I work on that every night. Um, will be happening, the production.
Okay, so that was my next question was, where, where's the, where's the page production done? Like the, the page design, the editing, the, all that stuff?
All over the nation, the page designers and us, and then, um, editing is my, myself and other staff, primarily myself.
So you said all over the nation, so like, where's the sports page designed and edited?
It depends on where it's been assigned that night.
Okay.
So like, for example, my husband works for the Lee Design Center, he lives here in Scottsbluff, and it might be him that designs it that night, it might be somebody else who lives somewhere else, depending on who is assigned. And then our local editor, he, he's the one that tells them how to design it and then does the editing and all of that.
So there is a local editor?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim Johnson is our local sports editor, he started in, I wanna say August, I might be off there, but, um, when the previous editor left, he came on.
How many, uh, how many local spot, or how many local advertisers have you lost since you changed to this format?
I would not know that, that's again, the advertising isn't my purview, I can only.
Can you tell me your circulation, what your, how many papers?
According to the Nebraska Press Association, um, website, I checked before that, because I, this mor- before this meeting, it's about seven thousand. Um, and I, I checked to see what the Voice News of Western Nebraska's was and the Business Farmer, those are the other two legal.
And what are they?
Newspapers. Uh, the Voice News of Western Nebraska was approximately six hundred and twenty-five, sorry, I've got it on my phone, and Voice News, I was, it's around sixteen hundred.
In, in his letter, it says the reach of the Star Herald isn't changing.
Right.
Meaning what?
Uh, so when he's talking about the reach, he's talking about our subs, our circulation. The only way that changes is if you decide you're not gonna be a sub- a subscriber, for example. And then the reach also includes our digital product, which would, you know, our, our E editions and things like that go to all kinds of people. People pick up the newspaper from wherever they might pick it up from.
So, so the Business Farmer, you said, is about seventeen hundred people, circulation?
That's what I'm recalling off the top of my head, I'd have to take a look and see specifically on my phone, I can grab that real quick.
So the state statute requires that we have a, choose, that we choose a newspaper with a circulation of at least three hundred?
You have, no, you have to be, you have to have a circulation of at least three hundred to qualify as a legal, as being able to be a legal newspaper.
Is one of, is one of the requirements.
One of the requirements, yeah.
You're not considered a legal newspaper in Nebraska if you don't have under three hundred, you're not a newspaper, pretty much is what they're saying.
So the Business Farmer has three hundred or more.
So they would be considered.
They would be considered a legal newspaper for those.
They would meet, they would meet the, that portion of the requirement.
Right, right.
How many, how many reporters, uh, for the Star Herald, um, live outside of the Panhandle?
None.
Lauren Brant lives in the Panhandle?
Lauren Brant isn't along with the Star Herald.
How long did she work for the Star Herald while she was in Colorado?
Um, approximately a year, Brad Stamen hired her. I have to, I wasn't here when, uh, when she was brought on, I wasn't at the Star Herald, so. Um, she had been looking at transferring back, they had previously lived here, her husband had worked for Nebraska Aman Parks or USDA, one of those jobs. And they, they decided not to stay, but it had been a conditional employment that she wouldn't move back and then. They made their decision to stay in Colorado.
So.
Not really, yeah. I can only roughly tell you what that was because I wasn't involved at that time.
The, um. Where does the editor-in-chief of the Star Herald live?
Well, the, the editor of Western Nebraska lives in North Platte, and I guess she could qualify.
What is, what is, what is Western Nebraska? You said the editor of Western Nebraska, is that another publication?
The editor of Western Nebraska. So she oversees the North Platte Telegraph and the Star Herald, and she grew up here in Scottsbluff.
So she, so the editor-in-chief of the Scottsbluff Star Herald lives in North Platte?
The editor of Western Nebraska does, yes.
I guess I don't understand what Western Nebraska is. Is it Western Nebraska?
That is her title, editor of Western Nebraska, because she oversees two newspapers, plus the gearing courier, Hemmyford Ledger, Lexington.
Where are the classifieds put together at?
The classifieds are partially here and then some, and then North Platte.
What's going on, what, when I had a complaint about the cla- a classified ad that I tried to place that did not run, I was told to contact the Tulsa World.
I don't. Again, I'm not involved in advertising, it was peripherally known, so I don't know why they would have referred you there.
It was from, it was the, a website, it was on the website that said I needed to contact the Tulsa World.
Yeah, sorry, I don't, I'm not involved in the advertising. Kevin could probably answer that question.
Where are the obituaries, uh, produced?
The obituaries are, again, that's an advertising function. It seems like it would, should be using, it was for years, but, uh, they moved out under advertising, so. I believe some of that is with the woman who works remote on classifieds, and then there's other persons involved. I'm involved on occasion, and then Kevin is the publisher. And again, if you check with the other newspapers, they are also, Voice News of Western Nebraska's entire staff right now is remote.
Where's customer service located?
That is gonna again be varied depending on what your need is. Editorial will be directly here. If you're placing an advertising, it might be your advertising representative, it may be. Your, your obituary person, it may be the classifieds person.
Are they located here or are they elsewhere?
It's gonna be tend, depend on what, what you need.
Are there any customer service representatives here in Scottsbluff?
Currently, yes.
Which ones?
And we have advertising.
Which ones, which, which ones are located here? If I, if I don't get my newspaper, am I going to get a local?
Yes, we have two circulation persons who are, yes. That I can answer. The advertising is where it gets a little.
So when the newspaper starts getting delivered via U.S. Postal Service, is it going to be, leave Rapid City on a USPS truck? Or is it gonna come to Scottsbluff and then leaves on a USPS truck?
My understanding is that it will. Be brought to Scottsbluff and then delivered from there, but again, that's something Russ taught, he does our circulation, could more specifically answer.
So, but it is gonna be through U.S. Postal Service, is that correct?
How many carriers are we losing?
There won't be any carriers. I, I don't know the numbers, I'm not involved in circulation.
I see.
A hundred per- so a hundred percent of the carriers will be.
I was just thinking of a number.
What kind of a number you want, Ken? The cost of it, is that what you're asking?
No, just how many.
He's asking specific number of people, and I apologize, I do not know, because again.
That's my question, what is it, what is this mail, mailing gonna cost, uh, a year to have mailed now?
For us, for how wa- long it will mail?
For me, as a, as a consumer, what am I gonna have to spend?
We would pay your subscription price.
What's a subscription price?
I don't know that either, I'm not.
Okay, what, and what is the E, what is the E edition cost?
It would depend on when you, honestly, when you subscribe, because again, just like everything else, there's specials.
You can subscribe for ninety-nine cents for six months and then they'll bump you up to four hundred bucks a year, automatically.
And four hundred bucks a year?
No, the thing that I saw the other day is at twenty-four ninety-one after six months, I was helping a woman do hers and it said, um, twenty-four ninety-one, so. But again, it's also gonna depend on specials that are ongoing at the time, and that's been, that's been the, the whole entire twelve, twenty years that I've been there. Um, it's depended on what, when you call and get your subscription. If you aren't, aren't happy with your price, you can call and get a different price, kinda like. We used to have a sports editor who always called and negotiated his cable bill.
What about, what about the people that don't know that they can call and get a different price and they just drop the paper and they're not getting this information? This is where we're headed. And this what we're trying to prevent is, we're here to protect the taxpayer and the consumer.
I think a couple things that, obviously, you've heard it from a whole lot of other people besides this group. Of the disappointment and frustration as to, um, what's going to be happening to our local newspaper. Um, no one's liking it. Um, I didn't expect they would, and of course, um, I realize that, um. The Star Herald or anyone else is only gonna be in business if they can make money. I realize that. And I think that what we have to realize is that, um, unless the numbers are there. Um, the Star Herald or anyone else is not gonna produce something that isn't profitable for them. But we are frustrated with, we used to have this, and now all of a sudden, we virtually have half of that. I have wondered, I haven't made the phone call yet, but I wondered, when I paid my four hundred and forty bucks or whatever it was. In the beginning of the year for a one-year subscription to the Star Herald, am I still, is it still gonna cost me the same for three editions? Which would supposedly be thicker than what they used to be, but is it, is it gonna cost me that full four hundred and forty-four? All the way through my current subscription and I get virtually half of the newspapers, and I will.
I can answer that for you.
Still gonna cost me the same.
It's gonna cost you the same, and you're, and you're talking to somebody who doesn't live here.
Right.
That I can tell you.
So I know that there's lots of things that we could talk about that are negative. Um, how many people are in your office right now downtown Scottsbluff? It's minimal. Um, it's certainly minimal compared to what it used to be. And, um, uh, I, I know that the content in our paper has been more like a regional newspaper. Than a local newspaper for the last twelve months. I know more about Carney and Lexington and some other places than I do about Scottsbluff. Because it, it hasn't been, um, a local newspaper. And certainly you're gonna lose people when you don't provide local information and local news, but here's what I do know. I know that it's still, um, it's still the best thing going for a whole lot of people.
There's some people that count on it.
There's a whole lot of people that count on it, and I'm talking about my age group of sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety-year-old people. They depend on it and they look forward to it. And, um, I realize there's a group of people like Charlie, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. That can get by without it, and that's what they're doing, and that's what's causing this change. But to me, certainly, um, until, when do we make that decision about, um, who the, um, official newspaper is? At the beginning of the year, right?
At the reorganization meeting, yeah.
Reorganization meeting.
Right.
And to me, I don't think we have a whole lot of choice other than to leave it at that until January, but in January. I think we will have some decisions to make, but I, even at that, um, if, if their, um, circulation is seven thousand. And the closest thing to it is fifteen hundred, um, I'm not sure that there's a whole lot of questions or thinking to be done. I, I, I think we have to, um, digital, digital only, in my opinion, is not an option.
Well, and there are a lot of people that don't, don't use it or don't have access to the digital.
Digital only is not an option.
And, and you were talking about a, a certain group, my wife reads that paper from cover to cover. She reads legal notices. Why, I don't know, but she does. But, but the other thing I think that needs to be brought out is we, we are the largest county in the Panhandle. Out of the eleven counties that, that are out here, and we have a three-day or a three-week newspaper now. And, and that's disappointing, and, 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 and the point that over the last, over the last twelve months. Again, we know more about what happened on the, on the Grand Island or, or not Grand Island, but Carney or North Platte City Council meeting than we have here. We've gone, I don't know how many meetings without a reporter here.
I wish you would've been here last week, last meeting, because we had a, we had a constituent. Who was almost brought to tears because of how sad he is about the current state of the Star Herald. And I would, I would go as far as to say that the reason, or a, a big reason, we know that, you know, the industry's changing and there's a lot of dynamics there in the marketplace. And, and that's, that's life and that's, it's sad. Um, you know, I still very much love holding a newspaper in my hands, and I'm, you know, a millennial. But, um. But, um, I think the Star Herald has, has, um, stabbed itself in the foot um, time and time again, day after day, by displaying the con, it's, I mean, the Star Herald has and the, the employees at the Star Herald, the writers for the Star Herald have a, an obvious contempt for the average Scotts Bluff County consumer. And so that is another drastic, um, important reason why the, the circulation is dwindling, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. And it's, if, if the Star Herald knew its, or respected, I know they know, they know their consumer base, but if they respected their consumer base, they would write appropriate articles, share the news, not fake news, but share the, both sides of the story. And until we get that, this thing is gonna keep sinking like a rock. And if the Star Herald could pivot and, and, and share the news unbiasedly from both sides, you know, this thing might not sink quite as fast. And I'm gonna leave it at that, um.
I think that that's subjective, I think that what, what, you know, that this is feared off of legal notices and the service that we do provide on that, we do provide legal notices, um, the state statute does require an advertising and a, of public notices in a legal newspaper. We have the biggest circulation of those, I, I do still think that we'll be providing a good product. Um, hope that people will give that a chance and, um, I guess I leave that at Kevin's letter, anything else and can be subjective and again, adjusting to industry trends is something that all of us have had to do. We're the, we were the only daily newspaper in Western Nebraska for at least the last five years considering that, um, Fox Butte and Sidney both changed to weekly papers at least five years ago.
What is, what, what is North Platte, are they a weekly paper or daily paper?
They're a daily newspaper.
They're a daily newspaper.
Talking about the Panhandle, yeah, um, they, you know, we were the only daily in, in the Panhandle.
So why is, why is the Star Herald going to three days but the, but North Platte is not going to three days? What is, I would think that based on the, you know, the different regions of Nebraska, when you think about North Platte, you know, there, Lincoln County has thirty-six thousand residents, Scotts Bluff County also has thirty-six thousand residents, but we serve a much broader area, we s- we serve many more counties out here. And the North Platte Telegraph primarily only serves that one county. So I would venture to say that our population and our circulation would be much greater than what the Telegraph has. And so why do, why are we getting cut, why are we getting cut to three days while the Telegraph stays daily? That's, that's, that's another, um, concern I have, I, I don't think the right decision was made and, and I, and I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say that the Telegraph should go to three days a week, but, um, I would be very interested, I, I would, I would like to have, um, you know, Kevin Austin and, um, the, uh, sorry, I, I'm blinking on her name now.
It's Joan Van Campen.
Jo- Jo- Joan Van Campen to, to come.
A lot of people might know her, she grew up here in Scotts.
So I would like, it would be great to have them here at a meeting sometime to, to maybe answer some of the questions, I know you've probably got it recorded, so you can take all these questions back and maybe they could come and present the answers here. Um, but I'll just, my final comment, I guess, on this situation is that this Supreme Court decision was made in nineteen sixty-eight, which said that just because a paper is printed outside of the county, it can still be considered a, a, a local newspaper, um.
And the statute upholds that.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, so, but I'm gonna say that this was, this decision and this stat, this, this decision's from nineteen sixty-eight, well before the internet, well before KNEB dot com, well before Twitter, Facebook or any other, um, new, um, media. And so, and the, and before remote work and before classifieds got published in Tulsa and obituaries printed on the East Coast and all these things, and so I don't think that this, I think if we had a case here, I believe we do have a case here, and I think the state legislature's gonna be taking this out very soon, um, to do away with the, the print newspaper and I, I think it's, I think we should s- there's no reason why the Star Herald can't print our public notices. I just don't think we should have to pay to place them in the newspaper any longer, I think they should do that as a service to the constituents. And I do believe in, in the, in the very near future, we're gonna be going, um, the other direction. And if the Scotts Bluff Star Herald believes it's in their best interest to print public notices, they will do that. Um, and they will get those public notices, notices by going to Twitter or going to KNEB dot com. Um, but we won't have to go to the Star Herald to make an official public notice.
Kelly, what does that do with your deadlines, you know, with our, uh?
I'm gonna talk to the gal I deal with and have been dealing with for probably the last year.
You know, we have, we have, we have to put it in three days advance or whatever the case might be.
Oh, yeah. The Star Herald is still publishing the same day that I put your notice in the paper, so I'm guessing my deadline would remain the same, but.
But if you're only getting three papers, is it going to be?
It's still published on the same day that I put it in the paper. My, my concern is that what is my deadline to get it in there?
Yeah.
That means I might be changing deadlines for everybody in the county to get agenda items to me. So we might have something that's three weeks old before you see it.
I see.
But I don't, I don't feel like it's gonna be a problem on my side.
Okay.
If it doesn't, from, from the initial conversations I've had. Yeah, that, that there isn't change, the, the specific, um, issues were picked.
My deadline is Monday, Tuesday, yeah.
Based off of when they had the most interest, I guess, in legal notices was my understanding, so I like I said, I can't say specifically, so I'm not involved in these discussions, but that's what I've been, I've gathered from others. Other clerks like Kelly.
I think we need to, Mark and I, again, I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, January is the time that we do all that, I would be very interested to see what the circulation is in December. And, and, and also, and also for North Platte. And, and if, uh, if, if things continue to deteriorate, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing something prior to January if that's, if that's what we need to do, cause it does cost us a lot of money to, to print all this stuff.
If you're going off of our two other legal papers, we're not gonna reach as many people as we are and that's the people we're concerned about that read the Star Herald.
But if we have another means of doing it, either through KNEB dot com or some other, some other means.
We're not gonna have change in law by then.
Says out that it must be in the newspaper.
It does.
Okay, and if we have one that reaches three hundred people, then we're still legal.
Yes, you are, but the state statute does say a legal newspaper within the county.
So, some decisions are gonna be made, I think you, you've heard plenty before you came here. But I, you've heard plenty, your company has heard plenty about what your intentions are and other things with what's happening at the Star Herald. And a public body like this needs to say it as well, because there's thousands of people in the county that feel similar to what we do. And I think, um, you never hear from most of their voices. And there's been lots of people that have, I, I rarely get lots of comments, but I've had lots of comments on this issue and a lot of people are frustrated with it. And you need to know that, your company needs to know that, your publisher and Mr. Kevin needs to know that. And, um, and I think they do, I think they've heard it before, but they need to hear it from a local elected group and then we happen to have, like most other elected groups in town, um, need to publish public notices. And, um, because of that, you get to hear kind of a double dose, but there's frustration out there, as you know. And, um, so, but, um, I think as with anything else, um, we out in the private sector, we look at what our options are, to me, we look at what our, we, we take a serious look at what our options are in January and we make decisions.
Yeah, and as you mentioned before, I mean, times are changing, lots of businesses have changed, Star Herald's not the only one.
Right, I understand.
So.
I think, I think a lot of this, you know, there's obviously a lot of frustration, but I think that all, the, the, the overall sentiment is disappointment, sadness, the Star Herald has been such a s- staple in our community for so long and it's, the state is, the state of the Star Herald is, is just sad. And I'll leave, oh, that's, that's my last comment.
Yeah, right, thank you, Monette.
Thank you.
All right, all right, one, uh, we don't have any old business, we do not need to discuss our offers on sixteen under Stent Street anymore.
That can go away.
That's going, that's going away, you don't have to print that anymore, Kelly, it's done. Okay, at this particular point, and I apologize, sir, uh, under public comments from the, from the public at this time, please, come on, come on up here, I, again, I wish, I wish we could have got you up here a little sooner.
No, don't worry, this is very afternoon for me.
We, we've got, we've got stuff we need to follow here.
Yes, understandable, very interesting, I see you guys do a lot, heavy lifting here.
Really? Well, thank you, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Daniel Kehos, everybody calls me Dano, my address is ten fifteen Ninth Avenue, Glen Scotts, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska.
Absolutely, thank you.
I am the visual arts representative for the newly designated Creative Beat District. The new creative district that's been designated from Seventeenth on East Overland all the way up west to Broadway and then Broadway spanning out to Twenty-Seventh. Um, the initiative was started by a center in Lincoln in twenty twenty, unfortunately got knocked out due to COVID. So that was a little bit of time, basically what it was, was those releasing funds from the state of Nebraska in order to be applied for by townships and counties in Nebraska to create where consider art districts. And to give an idea of that, if you go like Cheyenne or Fort Collins, they have like mural paintings on the walls, statues that have been painted. Um, all this is in regards to creating a better sense of community. Um, it helps interconnect businesses, other civic and, um, community organizations and basically trying to retain some youth to our area, as well as give those creative people like myself the opportunities to make, um, our world a little more colorful and closer. I got involved with the community art district about a year and a half ago and it's been a lot of work trying to get the paperwork filed and everything to get the designation. Fortunately, we have done so, we've come a long way, um, but the fundage is still kinda slow rolling. Uh, I'm not here about fundage today, obviously, um, but I see issues that art can cover. For instance, here's some examples of what I have done, um, these ones I've actually done myself. I've seen things in the community that I don't know what it looks like, I'm just. So I have got together with a friend, Paul King.
I love this one, I love it.
A friend called Paul King, he runs Choices School, we use students through them. Um, I, I started my own five oh one C three nonprofit called Boost. We have back school events and that got us into networking with many, many other organizations, you know, Family Success Center, Scotts Bluff Schools, Gearing Schools, Choices, and the list goes on and on, the people that have, uh, been donators and, and supporters of what we do. Um, this is kinda like a perfect storm for me, I've been trying to do these, these kinda things for a long time, make art, um, more viable to the c- community and be able to show how much that can do for people. Um, as we go along into the subjects that we're dealing with today, life gets kinda trudging, you know? I ultimately feel that the possibility of us being able to do all this stuff and add color to our world makes a big difference. You know, it really does, if you just drive by the same wall for twenty years, it's just a wall. After we get our hands on it, we have so many people in the community help us, it's literally part of the community. Um, the last mural that we did is just, it was, it was crazy, the response to all the people that helped us and all the people that were supportive, I mean, I'm not sure if you're savvy on Facebook and stuff like that, but we've got some record likes for people who support that. Um, but basically what I'm here today to ask is for permission to, um, put some of my work on the bridges. Um, county bridges down there, it's been a terrible spot for graffiti, longer than I've been alive and I don't see that stopping anytime soon, but where a lot of people see a negative, I see an opportunity to improve that for the community. You know, we can put, we can use that stuff as a backdrop and the reason that it popped in my head is because I see a lot of people down there taking senior pictures. A lot of, I see a lot of people down there taking family pictures, you know? And, uh, the list goes on, everyone from, from people who are just visiting the community or coming back to the community to visit family during holidays and stuff like that, or just people who are out traveling that, you know, such things as the bike races and the balloon races and, you know, some, some, all those things bring in, uh, people from outside.
You're talking about the main bridges, like the Broadway Bridge or Twenty-first Street Bridge or Avenue I?
Yeah.
Is that, th- those are the ones you're talking, the, 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 the concrete underneath the bridges, okay?
So what sparked the, there's a conversation going on, uh, late last week and, uh, the topic was the two bridges by the YMCA.
Where the Pathways.
Where the Pathway.
Where the Pathway is.
So the pathway goes under the bridge and there's, there's already some, some negative graffiti down there.
Yeah.
Dan O'Sullivan to, to, you know, but he wants to come and do it the right way, he wants to ask permission to go down there and paint, he's not gonna go down there and graffiti in a bad way. He's gonna turn it into something that hopefully isn't, you know, covered up again or, or, but you know, the, the paintings have been at the laundromat on East Overland now for over a year.
That's great.
And nobody has gone over to deface it, you know, cause it's such a beautiful piece of work.
We actually had an Indian medicine man come bless it.
You what?
We had a, a, one of our natives from, from Alliance.
That's cool.
Gave us a blessing on the wall because of the subject matter.
That's cool.
No one's touched it since.
Do you watch the program Hometown on HGTV?
I have not.
One of the first things they do, this is a, they're from, I can't remember, Georgia, I believe it is, but they go, and they just did Fort Morgan. And one of the first things that they do is they find a, a big blank something in the entrance to town and they put a mural on it, something to, to welcome somebody coming to their town. And, and I see that in the pictures, I see that in the pictures that you have here. And, and it's, it's, it's exactly the same thing, exactly the same thing. And, and they, I, I mean, every town, they've done, oh gosh, numerous towns.
Yes.
But every one of it's something that depicts their area or their town or their, their, whatever it is that's going around, you know, around their area, and that's exactly what you did here.
Yeah, I, I really love sharing the history, the culture of the way we grew up here.
Yeah.
Um, this place is unlike any other place, I've looked all over the country, but I call this home because it's so amazing. You know, you go two hours in any direction and you see an entirely different landscape. You know, all those things have come together over time to give us this culture and history.
When, when Charlie called me, the, the, the first concern I had is that we do something really nice and then somebody tries to deface it or whatever the case might be. And, and, uh, his, his comment to me, and it makes a lot of sense, is that you guys know who does the bad stuff?
Yes.
I'm assuming.
Not, not fully, but I'm aware of a couple individuals.
You're, you're, you're aware of it, yeah, yeah. And, you know, things, things like this, East Overland is a, is a main entrance, in- entrance to our community. People driving in looking at something like that, it's a welcoming, it's a welcoming thing. And I, and I know the city of Scotts Bluff, city of Gearing are always looking for ways to make things look better when people are coming to our communities.
Yes, we finally have the opportunity to make it more cohesive, to make it flow.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and reflect, like I said, the culture and history of the area, the agriculture and all the great things that came from.
Now, you know we're gonna be doing some work on the bridges, I don't know whether that's gonna affect anything or not.
Cause, yeah, they'll be underneath there, they're gonna be shoring up, it's better to wait till that.
Wait, wait till that bridge is done.
And I think, I think the West Bridge, I don't think we're working, we're working on the East Bridge, right?
I thought we were doing both.
I thought we were doing both.
We're doing both sides.
Yes, like totally, the West Bridge is the bad one.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, both, both sides, are you talking about doing both ends of it?
Um, I was asking permission, I was gonna leave it up to you guys whether or not you would allow us to do that, cause we will gladly do as much as we can.
Because they're not getting permission to do what they're doing now.
Yeah, we were gonna use them to bring it.
Exactly.
But the north end is certainly more of a priority with the walkway through there and, but the south end would be fine too.
I do have some examples.
Yeah, not the whole thing, no.
Ideas that we could do, obviously, we wanna stay cohesive with the community, um, thinking about doing, you know, the local school logos, uh, Bearcats, Gearing, Old Dogs.
Yeah, make sure you get both of them.
Yes, but keep them on the respective side of the Bearcat.
Exactly.
Put, put the Bearcat on the wrong side. Put, put the Bearcat on the wrong side, it's gonna get defaced.
It's, something, something's gonna happen.
There you go.
So, and then just certain things like Welcome to Scotts Bluff. I'm so sorry, my printouts didn't, my, my printer did not work with me. Um, but here's some options of, because the graffiti's not going anywhere, and we can update that to make it look more beautiful. Stuff like that. I mean, we really have to be able to see this. It says S E B N. But the color schemes is what I wanted to illustrate in that. And then there's cultural stuff like this. That's a little bit stretched. What I wanna do is not anything vulgar, not any, no references to lurid material. I want to keep it, um, good to you.
I'm not sure what this is.
Just look at the colors. He said, just, do you look, the color scheme is the thing.
Yeah, so that color scheme is just another, uh, color palette from the red one that I gave you.
Gotcha.
Just to give you an idea. And then there's massive things. I think this would look amazing or a variation thereof. This is about a fourteen foot tall, about thirty five foot wide. Because art in this scale just looks jungle. But when you have the opportunity to do it on such a large scale and the colors are more spread out, it's quite amazing.
So what, what are you depicting with the skull with this? Explain that to me.
Um, just, it was, it was just an image I found. Anything can be changed. Obviously, we have to do submissions.
And this one also.
Yeah.
That one right there, that's renewal. It represents light and dark as we go along through time. We're all beautiful at one time, but we're all gonna end up in the same spot and catch up to this.
But we hope, we hope we all end up in the same spot.
I'm sure we will.
Yeah, yeah.
I have faith that's.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's a great, I personally, I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you, thank you. No, I've been, I've been rolling this around for a while, and I could, you know, I could take something that's a negative that people see as when they're, when they're walking down there with their families, walking their dog and stuff like that, they look over and it's not really that nice, but I don't see it stopping anytime soon.
And to be honest, when I'm driving, I, I don't know that I've ever seen anything under the bridge. I'm not looking at that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the guy driving seven miles an hour that I'm trying to get by. But, uh...
Yeah, it, it's a form of, to me, it's a form of, uh, enrichment for the community.
And you've got other buildings in town that you're looking at doing, too?
Yes, yes. As a visual arts representative, um, we just got our designation. The first amount of funds have been released, but they're very limited so far. So we have to do networking and educational, I guess is what it would be called. Our first booth is gonna be set up at the first brands on Broadway at the Eighteenth Street Plaza to give an introduction to who we are and what we're gonna be doing with all this stuff.
So you get, you, uh, whatever it is you're gonna do, you get the building owner's permission before you do anything with it?
Yes, yes, we do. We are in the process, I am in the process of streamlining that. After doing these last two projects, I came out with, uh, budgetary ideas. You know, material cost, material quantities, um, how that translates to the actual surface of a wall, because a very, very rig- rigid wall will take twice as much material as a square wall. You know, these things are all starting to work out, and that's partially what I do, too.
Yeah.
Trying to create this formula per square footage and then get a concise idea of what the artist is gonna perform. There's many artists that are gonna be joining us in this, not just me and a couple others, but Mary Hunt and Michelle Denton. They're good friends, too. And, uh, their styles are completely different, but that's what's gonna make it great, being able to showcase the talent and skill of different people, yes.
So to me, it seems to me that there's some agreement here that we're interested in, we're, everybody's interested in it. Um, the logistics of how we, um, get it done and when we get it done, maybe after the bridge project, if we're talking specifically about the Scotts Bluff, uh, highway, Scotts Bluff Gearing Highway Bridge. Um, I, there, again, in those areas, um, you've done work on what I call private buildings so far.
Yes.
These pictures I've seen. When we get on public property, there is probably a few things that might be offensive to some people.
Yes.
And there's some things that would be offensive to me. You hit a hot button when he's seen the skulls.
Yes.
Um, and, um, I'm just telling you that on the public property ones, we better keep them pretty vanilla, pretty generic, pretty, um, let's not get on the fringes of putting things on those.
Yeah, I, I highly anticipated that.
So i- if, as long as we can do that and somebody like, um, the tourism kind of guy can help lead, uh, lead the thought process on that kind of stuff, I would be okay with it, but...
No, no, I, I'm, I'm totally fine with submitting ideas.
Right.
This, remember, this is Scotts Bluff, Nebraska.
Right.
Okay.
Conservative.
Conservative Scotts Bluff, Nebraska.
Especially on public property, I think.
Yeah, we can just call it to a flower. We can do many things.
Yeah.
That's, that's the positive side of art. Anything you can match and you can make happen.
Yeah. I like, I like, I like what you've done, though. It's, it's really very, very nice.
Right.
Thank you. Very much.
Very nice.
So if you guys could be here with me, I have a couple other partners that, that are paint monkeys with me.
Yeah. But I, 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 to be real honest, I would wait until we're finished with that work, because I'd, I'd hate to have what, your artwork destroyed by our, by our contractors. It's, when, when are we scheduled to start on that rest, remember?
I don't know. I don't think it's out for bid yet. I think there's still been a sign.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
But, uh...
I don't mind redoing it. Honestly, I, I love doing this.
I just hate to have you waste the money. That's the only thing. It costs, it costs us something.
Do we have overages of materials and stuff like that?
Yeah.
It's possible.
Well, if you're gonna do that, start on the east side, not the west side, because west side's gonna have more work done.
Okay.
It, it may, yeah, maybe, it may be something where it may not be, it may not be disturbed that much. Who knows? I, I'm not a bridge builder. I don't, I don't, I don't know what's all gonna happen.
So how, how does this board wanna move forward? Do we wanna, do we wanna approve submissions? Do you want that to go through me or go through Tourism, or do you want to, do we need to take action at a later meeting to give permission?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need something formal to take action on.
We'll let Charlie be the, the point person.
We'll let, we'll let you be, yeah, I think so. Good idea.
So when it's time to put it on the agenda, you'll let me? Awesome, perfect.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Again, apologize for making me wait so long.
No, no, you guys are fine.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you all.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Did you get your pictures?
Heather.
Where you want to work on the bridge, maybe it would be something where he could reach out to, where Charlie, if you could get him Steve's information, then maybe it would be something that he could start working with Steve.
Oh, sure. With, yeah, with Steve Baird. Yeah. Or even, or even, or even work with Russ. Russ could be on top of it, too.
Well, I, I think Steve's gonna be more in the scheduling part of that. I, you know.
Are you sure?
You know, because he might be able to tell you if they're gonna take something down.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Steve.
Call up to the roads department.
You could start a project that you can finish later, too.
Yep, yep. Awesome. I think Charlie will have a handle on it and have some work with Steve.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Thank, thank, thank for what you've done so far. Go ahead.
Thank you all very much. How do I get permission? Is there like a permission slip or a get out of jail free card? Because what people are gonna see me doing, I mean, what people are gonna see me doing, they're gonna be like, hey, you can't be doing that. And I just wanna be like, you know.
We'll, we'll do a resolution.
Okay.
And we'll say Dan Kehos has permission to be here. We'll put the county seal on it. You can fold it up, put it in your back pocket.
We'll get you, get out of jail free card.
Well, depending, depending on what.
This is all your territory, you know, I mean.
What I would suggest, depending on what piece of property you're going to be doing, I, and I think that probably needs to come before the board.
Yeah.
On, on, this one's gonna be the bridge. If there's another side of the county building or something, or, you know, who knows, whatever.
What I'd like to see him do is, is make you assign that to has your name and whoever.
Okay.
And this work has been approved by Scotts Bluff County, but have your name written right on it.
Well, seriously, you need.
It's like we'd run a construction site. We'd put on.
You need, you need some recognition for what you're doing, too.
Well, I've gotten so much, honestly, um, in the past, in the past two weeks, I made it on the front page of the Star Herald three times. I've got it by NBC and NBC.
All the days.
Yeah, it was, it was just, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. No, it, it's been, the first one really, really just got me thinking about how much it touches the community.
Yeah.
Everyone who came up, there was at least two hundred people that came up and painted on the wall. I, I made them do it. They're like, oh, no, 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 no. So I was like, so I devised an idea, circle, square, triangle, put one on the wall that big, so paint it.
Well, I'm telling you, that, that program, and they've done, I, I'm, I'm gonna guess, a dozen different communities, and one of the first things that they do is do a big mural at the entrance of the town.
Yep.
Just like what you did. Just very, very similar.
We're getting there. Yeah, the, the creative district was, uh, made in Scotts Bluff, but that's why I wanted to do them in Gearing, too. And I talked to Charlie earlier about it, because it needs to be somewhat cohesive when you go across.
Absolutely.
You know, family and friends aren't just in Scotts Bluff or Gearing. When you go through, it needs to be a, a complete, you know, cohesive vision.
Oh, when you're coming to Scotts Bluff, walk them to Scotts Bluff. You're heading to Gearing, walk them to Gearing.
Yeah. Yep.
Could you, uh, could, could you hang a tarp to where you're painting in behind so not everybody can see what you're doing? And then also put signs up there that this restoration work is being done by and funded by, and then we'll have it a day when we'll go down and open that whole thing up.
Yeah, a reveal would be great.
Do a dedication and open up the thing.
No, that, that would be a great cooperational thing. A reveal would be excellent.
Awesome. Good deal.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks again, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hope you make it.
Anybody else, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the board at this time? Any other public comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to board and staff reports. We'll start with the board. Anybody?
Well, yeah, we have a new bridge at Carter Canyon, as everybody.
Saw that.
I had a picture of it.
I don't know if everybody's aware of that. I don't know if Kenny B. has. We need, they need to know, and, uh...
Does it have a, had a schedule?
Yeah, no, it's a little behind schedule. We're supposed to have done prior to.
Which one?
It, but it is done.
Carter, Carter Canyon Bridge.
It'll be working for what you need for, what is your deal at sixty?
Oh, bike race.
Yeah, it's, it's up and going.
So, yeah, you're all good. It's open. I've got, have you got a picture of it?
Is this the one that burned, or is this the one that?
Yeah, this one that burned. That's the Carter Canyon.
Yeah, there you go.
It's all back together.
That's not the one where they did the slats backwards?
Yes, sir, that is.
Oh, it is?
This is the right slabs. It's all complete.
And they fit.
They fit right in there. Just imagine if you do it twice, how well, how good you get.
Pretty bridge.
And it's so green.
If there's such a thing as a pretty bridge, it's...
It won't burn again.
Okay.
Could turn to glass.
It could. We've got some of those doing that right now out there.
Look what I know.
You know.
Okay. Anything else for us?
Uh, that's all I have, right.
Mike, you have anything?
Oh, oh, just, I do have one more, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Uh, both of the new snow blowers will be in. One's coming today. It's supposed to be delivered today, and one's being delivered tomorrow by all the, all the trucking.
Today and tomorrow, you said?
Both, both be here, both supposed to be here this week.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. Mike, you have anything?
Last week I met with Captain Lawson from Scotts Bluff PDE and, uh, uh, Tom from Scotts Bluff Fire. Uh, we're gonna put together a meeting with Tyler and Troy and a few other representatives of the different agencies, uh, Valley Ambulants to discuss some nine one one issues that need to be addressed.
Very good, thank you. I, I don't have anything. I've got several meetings this week I need to attend to.
Is Valley Ambulance part of hospital now? Do you know?
Uh, yes, they are.
And we do not have a contract, so we will not be paying that bill this month, or again.
Right.
So, just making sure Kelly knows that, because she throws that one out there.
Well, Randy sends me the claim, so I'm guessing he won't do that anymore.
Well, I don't think he's gonna be in the same position he was in. I think he's all gonna be there.
Yeah, I mean.
He's gonna be a consultant for at least thirty days.
Yeah, but our, our contract is with.
Not what I heard.
So we had a contract. I mean, did, what was the, that type of agreement? Did we have so many days to find this information out?
No, the contract is with Valley Ambulance, not Regional West.
Well, they continue as, as Valley Ambulance, and it's gonna still be contracts that they get.
Oh, maybe I didn't understand what just happened.
I don't see why they get a bill. I don't think so.
There'll be Reg- Regional West ambulance service.
That's what they're gonna call it down there.
Right, and then we'll have to discuss how we're going to participate somewhere down the road.
Okay.
Well, for Kelly's purposes, I guess what we're, what we're telling her is if that bill comes in for her to hold it and bring it to the meeting next time?
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, that would be good.
And if something for Valley Ambulance gets remitted, then...
We don't pay Valley.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Mark, you have anything?
Yeah, a couple things. Kelly, um, you emailed about starting time, I think, for the protests.
Yes.
And you said nine o'clock. Did you get any feedback on that?
From one of you.
Okay. You didn't get it from me, but, um, I mean, nine o'clock's fine with me. Is that what we normally do?
It's what we've done since I've been clerk, maybe?
Well, her, uh, Kelly and I talked about, I was on her office.
We always started at nine.
But she had asked whether, starting at nine and, and going more days rather than late nights.
I was trying to back off how late in the day we go, because, I mean, it's, it's so much.
It is. I wouldn't mind going shorter days, you know, get out at three.
Shorter days, but maybe more days.
I'd be okay with that. That gives me time to work in the morning and work in the evening and...
Okay.
Well, it's by late, late night, we're just babbling anyway.
So are you saying nine to?
I was trying to stop at like seven.
That's enough.
He's saying three.
Hey, that's a full burning day.
You're gonna be.
Well, we could, I mean, we could give it a shot, but I don't think that is gonna work.
Well, then you're working through dinner hour. You're doing seven.
Nine to five.
I think nine to five or something.
I think you're gonna see protests off the chart.
I have a comment related to this.
So how like do you, nine, nine to five?
Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
I have the intentions of finding a way to, um, move as the Board of Equalization to lessen the, um, shock that hit everybody's mailbox today. I don't know how it's gonna, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but I'm looking for a way to, um...
I'm waiting.
I'm wa- I'm looking for a way to lessen the shock that hit the mailbox.
Because I got my card, too.
That, I mean, um, you know, we have.
We're gonna have to reverse something. We're gonna have to reverse something to make this.
I mean, we have a sit, we have, we're in a unique situation where we are, we've been told that we're in a housing bubble for the last three years. Um, we've seen it reflected in the sale prices, um, which is why Angie had to do what she had to do. However, um, there has, I, I think there's a way that the Board of Equalization can, can act, um, to back off, what, what her market studies have shown, because I believe that we're in a very inflated housing market right now. And, um, we've gotta find a way that's not gonna keep us here for three weeks of protests.
We, we, we were in that same market last year, Charlie.
I was gonna say, Ken, you can show him the sales.
Yeah, we were in the, we, we were in the same situation last year.
Well, I know. I know, but the, but the, but the assessor, but the assessor didn't do this to everybody last year. Now it's, the, the, the volume is, is, is much greater than it was last year. And we, it wa- and last year, we, we were able to manage it down to three days of protests, which is the least amount of protests that we've had since I've been on the board. And now we're probably looking at two weeks, if not two and a half weeks of protests, is what I've, just based on the feedback that I've gotten today.
Do you?
It's, I mean, we had, we, we, never before have we seen, have I seen a forty four percent increase on a single property. Or I haven't seen an entire neighborhood hit with twenty percent. That we've seen ten and twelve percent, but we've never seen twenty percent across an entire.
Well, all of, all of Scotts Bluff was fifteen, ten, ten percent last year. That's twenty five for one, one whole town.
Moral had twenty three percent when I worked over there.
Yeah.
Two years ago, Terry Town hit twenty three.
I think, I think as Board of Equalization, we should move to do something where we treat everybody in the county equally with a two or three percent raise. That's what I would like to see.
The only way it's ever gonna work.
That would require a change in statute.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Can we do that legally?
I don't know. I don't know. Maybe for, we can do anything. We have done on, during protest season, we have done anything.
We have done lots for one year, and if we can do something for one year.
For one year, one property.
For the rest of our lives.
For one year, one property, but we don't do a blanket, we've never done any kind of blanket.
We'll end up, we'll end up in court.
A one motion on thirty properties, three hundred properties, three thousand.
Twenty two thousand properties.
I don't know that we can do, but if, I'm interested in anything legal.
That's with me. That's what they would do.
It's, it's, it's up for discussion. I, I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just not sure how, how you're accomplishing it.
Right. No, I, I don't, and we, I think we need to find a way. We need to find a way.
We can work on that.
But, um, so anyway, when we talk about the schedule for protests, I just, I, I just wanted to say, I think we're looking at two and a half weeks of protests right now.
Well, then we need to start sooner, because we have to be done by the twenty fifth.
Or, or go longer.
I was gonna say, I, and that's what, I mean, if we must, the calendar will go nine to nine at least.
We'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to adjust to re- to represent the number of protests that we have.
I'm gonna suggest we start with a nine to five.
Nine to five.
And then if it, if that's not gonna work, then we'll have to extend those hours and meetings.
And, and we're gonna know when we get started. And, and we're gonna know when we get started.
Calendar set up for nine to seven, but, okay.
If, if, you know, before we start, we're gonna know that nine to five is not gonna work. We're gonna know how many we have.
Yeah, we'll know before we even get the first.
Yeah.
Right. Wow, yeah, as you start to schedule, you're gonna know whether or not we've got enough slots in there.
And Charlie, can I request that you come visit with me, and maybe we can figure out a legal way to see?
You're gonna have to help us.
Yeah, we gotta do something that's gonna work a little better.
Yeah. I, yeah, I will come, I'll come over.
You, you had, you had something else, Mark, I'm sorry.
So that was the email about the times, um, the next question, um, is it our next meeting that we're a day off?
Yes, sir.
So it's Tuesday the sixteenth, I believe?
Tuesday the twentieth.
The twentieth.
Twentieth.
Right?
Oh, yeah, Tuesday.
It's Tuesday the twentieth.
Twentieth?
Tuesday, the twentieth.
And you're gonna have two of them.
Two black eyes.
Just wanted to be sure we're all on the same page. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, Charlie, you have anything else?
No, um, Elaine touched on most of it, uh, the news out of Naco. We had a nice little ceremony in Ogalala last Friday. Groundbreaking at the new Naco West office building. Um, tourism's doing great things still. Um, the um, efforts to uh, have a successful USA Cycling National Championship event is, is, uh, we got a lot of people working hard on that. Um, a lot of collaboration from the city of Gearing, Scotts Bluff County, city of Scotts Bluff, um, and the local businesses. Um, and then we did get the final report from Huddle Up Sports, which is this consulting company that we hired, uh, to tell us, um, what I've been saying for four years now. But you can't be a profit in your own, own town, so here this consultant came and said, you know, we need to focus um, bringing in youth sports and that sort of stuff. And I don't know if I mentioned, I think the most impressive piece of information that came out of this was, was, did I tell you guys the difference between bringing in girls' sports versus boy's sports?
You did.
Okay, good. Do you guys remember? The average, if, if you have a, a twelve-year-old softball tournament for girls, that they're gonna bring like an average of four visitors with that girl athlete. If you have a, a, a boy twelve-year-old baseball tournament, you're gonna get an average of two visitors for, per one athlete. So, really looking for ways to uh, bring women's, girls' sporting events to the valley, whether that be cheerleading competitions, softball tournaments, um, golf tournaments, and those sorts of things. But that's, that's gonna be the focus as, uh, as well as these big events like USA Cycling and, and, and that sort of stuff, so. Uh, pretty, pretty neat stuff that we learned. Um, but then also s- county tourism is going to stop funding legacy events, um, that have been around for years and years and years. We want events like Oregon Trail Days to stand on their own, so that we can start helping new events get up and running. Um, this is something I've been pushing for, for the last four years, and this consultant came in and told us that's exactly what we need to be doing. Um, and so there was, you know, Scotts Bluff County Tourism, um, cut, cut a lot of funding from Oregon Trail Days this year. And there's some, there's some upset people about it. Uh, but if, if we can get the message out that we are going to be growing, um, our tourism season to not just be concentrated on those two weeks of July, but build that tourism season out, um, to last, you know, thirty weeks instead of two weeks, you know, that's, that's kinda the idea, so, you know, we have to give a lot of uh, credit to Oregon Trail Days for what they've done with, with the event and, and the revenue that comes off of those hotel room stays is going to help build, um, a, 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 a more broad-based tourism season for, for the county.
Makes sense. I mean, there, Oregon Trail Days is here. You don't have to tell everybody that's Oregon Trail Days.
Yeah.
You put the dates, you put the dates on, people show up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, we, we just wanna be very uh, cognizant and, and, and recognize that Oregon Trail Days is, is really what started this whole thing. And now we've got this tremendous, um, we have tremendous funding for tourism because of what Oregon Trail Days has uh, accomplished.
Art, Charlie, what, you know, what did you fund on Oregon Trail Days that you cut back on?
It was different every year. Um, you know, we've, we've funded their website, we've funded some pro- promotional materials, um, you know, schedules and those sorts of things. Um.
Who weren't really, I'm not talking about.
About ten thousand dollars.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No, we're talking about, you know, traditionally ten thousand dollars, and now we've come back to about nine hundred dollars.
It's mostly advertised, it, cause they weren't building anything, so it's.
Right.
All promotional items.
Yeah, they weren't really doing any uh, capital improvements or anything, it's just marketing materials, that kinda stuff, so. We believe Oregon Trail Days is, is in such good hands that they can, they can do this without county tourism plans.
Okay. All right. With that, I uh, would like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Did you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's just, it's only quarter to eight, but we'll keep going here. I'm sorry.
The video doesn't pick it up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've done that before.
Wanted to, we kind of mentioned it earlier with the S D L, but next week, um, I have the Nebraska Association of County Treasurers event out here. Tourism has been awesome and helping me plan activities for them on Tuesday. Um, Wednesday we have meetings at, Wednesday and Thursday, we have meetings at the Civic Center. Um, as of right now, I have eighty out of the ninety-three counties coming. So, we should have a really good turnout. Um, it will be primarily at the Civic Center uh, for our meetings, but we do have events at the Legacy of the Plains. We're taking them to the monument. We're taking them to the Midwest Theater, to the flyover, and then we will have dinner at the, um, Weeburg Center one night. So they will get us to see a good, um, span of gearing. So it should be good for Scotts Bluff County.
Yeah, very good.
What are you doing this week, Heather?
Oh, and tomorrow I'm going to the Board of Equalization workshop in Kearney, which is Wednesday morning.
Okay, thank you.
So I gotta learn all about how they do protests and some of the other treasures.
Good, then you can come up and help.
Yeah.
You probably don't want my opinion.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Hey, you guys.
All right.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of next meeting on, what'd you say, June twentieth? That R C I will be here. We've gotta finalize our, we've been meeting with them, and we met with Naco, and insurance committee will propose, bring you our proposals of what we're doing. Um, Kevin Sylvester will be here to complete our fiscal audit. I need to do budget adjustments for three different county departments at this point, the county court, relief and medical, and the HIDA fund. And we have a couple of resolution, resolutions that'll have to be presented and passed at next meeting, so just wanna give you a little bit of a heads up. And I may, we're trying to do a lot of work with Motorola, because our pa- our full payment is due now. We, two years ago, we signed up for a zero percent financing for s- twenty-four months, and the time is now to make a payment. And I'll give you more information, I may, I need, anyway, we got some things going on. We may need another claim period. Because we're not getting the money in from the cities, and everybody's now, of course, forgotten everything we talked about two years ago. That's my, that's gonna be my little snapshot. Yeah, they, they're getting bills, and maybe we should have probably started a month sooner than we did. And so then they're putting it front of their councils and getting things approved, and a little bit chaotic, so, but we're getting there.
Any other staff members?
I've got something to piggyback off. We were talking about the radios and the payments that are coming to the Kiowa district out, out west.
Kiowa?
Kiowa. They had a, um, they have an issue where they have not had radios installed yet. And they were told by Action Communications that the radios won't be installed until the middle of July at the soonest. Um, in fact, I think it'd probably be closer to August, because, um, they're not even s- scheduling anybody until July, and Moral.
No, I think you have a chip that you could use against Motorola, have Madison another month.
Well, or is it, or is it on them? That's the whole thing, too.
Well, I believe it's on our vendor, which is Action Communications. They haven't, they have not staffed up appropriately to do these installs in a timely manner. Um, and so I believe it's Action Communications with the non-performance. And we have the warranties already ticking on these machines that haven't even been used yet. And so, we need, so Kiowa has said they are not planning, they don't intend to send any money to the county until those are installed, and, and they also expect the um, warranty to not start until they are installed. And I think that's, I think that's legitimate.
Yeah, they'll just have to pay the interest for not making their payments. They've known, so.
But if they're, but they're, but if there's stuff, so I think, I think that interest is gonna have to be charged to Action Communications. There has to be some, there's some non-performance going on here.
Our Motorola has to.
There's a lot of.
Motorola needs to back up, have a look at what's going on. If they have to send.
Aren't there's a lot of po- political subdivisions that didn't decide what they needed or changed their mind about what they were getting as well? So, I mean, before we're jumping on the vendor, we need to double check our political subdivision, too.
I was thinking our vendor was Motorola.
It was, and that's.
Not Action.
That's right.
Well, our vendor is Motorola. Action does the installs on behalf. Yeah, they're the subcontractors.
Okay, so Motorola then.
But our agreements with Motorola.
I know, there's a lot, there's gonna be a lot of little things going on. And you're right, I just know that I've heard that person is very vocal, and it's like, we gotta get the whole picture, you know?
Maybe we should ask Motorola to be here, ask Action to be here at the next meeting and see where we're at, get an accounting where we are, because we owe this money. Things aren't done, we need to know why.
Okay, let's see if we get them on the agenda.
And if things are, anyway, I, I can tell you more about that if you're curious, cause maybe it'll be a non-issue. If I, if I can only make installment payments because they aren't allowing me to make a big payment, that's gonna be a big deal.
Okay.
And then, so these little problems will be, we'll figure them out as we go.
So, uh, yeah, so thanks for correcting me. If Motorola's a vendor, then I need to back up my comment about non-performance on Action's part. There, if, if anybody needs to make sure they're getting installed, it's Motorola, not Action. If Motorola's contracting with Action.
But we can go through Action to get Motorola here to answer some questions. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this might be a months-long thing. Okay, anyway.
All right, anybody else have anything to bring up? Kelly.
I am gonna go ahead and go to the Board of Equalization on, and then next week I will have my, uh, the Clerk Registered Deeds and Election Commissioners Workshop is the fourteen, fifteen, and sixteenth. So, I'll be out of the office on those days.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Okay, now, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session, and in that executive session will be the board and Angie, and Lisa will be out here unless we need you to come in, okay? I think that was your request. And uh, the reason would be to discuss personnel issue.
I move we go into executive session with the, um, board, uh, Angie and Lisa.
Don't stand.
As we need them, as we need them.
Yes.
Angie, is Angie waiting out here right now, too?
Coming in with us first, I believe.
Well, she is, but there might be a point where we need to make some discussion when she's not there.
Okay, well, let's, let's just go to the board, then we'll call you in. As we're needed.
The board and those two as they're needed.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, place your votes, please.
I'll put my tools away.
Well, you rushed into it.
Russ?
Russ, again.
Press yours again.
What?
Push your button again.
Please.
I pushed. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Okay to close?
Close. All right, going to executive se- going to executive session.
Yeses that I need on record?
What's that?
I, you have five yeses, which I need on record?
Yes, seven fifty-three. Okay, and you guys are messing with my bladder.